Hey, guys. Okay, I would like to call the order. The November 9th, 2022, City of Dan Allen Workshop. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which we stand one nation under God, indivisible, in the best of all, in the best of all.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to say a prayer or some words of encouragement? We usually, as part of how we do our business here, we start off with meetings and workshops in that way. Now, we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Williams.
Let us bow our heads, please. Father God, we stand before you with humble hearts, thanking you, God, and realizing that you are in control. As the psalmist said, "The earth is the Lord's and the fruit and the syrup of the world, and they did well therein." We pray in the name of Jesus that you will take control, that all things will be done decently and in order, and that you will give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, because we can do nothing without you and Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, have a lot. Okay, Ms. Odom, when you're ready, you will have to.
Mayor White?
Present.
Vice Mayor Henshaw?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Covage?
Present.
Councilwoman Madonza?
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Quirk, she's here. She stepped out of the room. Jan Smith, Finance Officer?
Here.
Troy Sider, who's going to be running a few minutes late. Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager, is not going to be at the meeting tonight. Julie Danowski, Records Clerk? Chief McQuaid?
Here.
Lieutenant Yaw?
Here.
And Attorney Hand will be attending via Zoom. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Before we get started, I'd like to go over a few things. Number one, I want to welcome everyone who has come to this workshop. We know the weather is turning bad, and some of us might have some things to do, but you came and we recognize that and appreciate it. Just want to go over a few things, how we run this meeting so it goes smoothly. If you would like to speak, we certainly want to hear what you have to say. If you sign up, you will be put first to speak. If you haven't signed up and you want to speak after you've listened to something, you certainly can raise your hand and you will be recognized. As with workshops, you have two opportunities to speak. At the beginning of the meeting, you can speak to any subject you want, and at the end of the meeting, you can make comment. What a workshop is, is the beginning of discussion that's a preliminary to our meeting that comes up Monday. We will discuss issues that more than likely will be looked at, possibly voted on. There are no binding votes that are taken at a workshop. It's an opportunity for the public to communicate with us, give us your ideas. It's an opportunity for you to listen to us, discuss the agenda as we work through it, and also gives you an opportunity to make comment on what you've heard the discussion to be. At this time, if you have any ringing device that can ring and interrupt the meeting, please turn it off. In fact, let me check mine. Thank you, Mayor White. If you do speak, please speak into the microphone, speak loudly or good as close to the mic as you can. Everything you say is being recorded, is part of public record. So think about what you're going to say and how you say it, because it is permanent. There are people that are listening to these comments on Zoom, so we ask that you speak where it can be heard. When you come up to speak, we will ask you for your name and address. Some of the things that we ask, there are no singling out of staff or a council person, the purpose of making that person embarrassed or to make that person feel uncomfortable. You keep all your comments to the entire council and direct your comments directly to me. We promise that we are very happy to have you here. Your courtesy toward us will certainly be returned. I would say this council is known for being courteous to those that show up. So with that said, we will start off with the public comment. There are a couple of changes on the agenda as it was published. Agenda item number five and six, these are going to be presentations only. These are, there is no request for funding, it's just going to be a presentation on these two topics. So with that said, we will start off the meeting with Agenda Item Number One, which is public comment, and you can speak to anything you want, including anything that's on the agenda or anything new and different. So at this time, Ms. Odom, do we have anybody signed up?
Bill Weber.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by asking, because the amount of materials in the Rainbow River may be the most studied natural resource in Florida. There are thousands of pages of technical data which I have been through. I'm going to go through some of it tonight in those green folders that you have in front of you, but I would like a little more time, maybe five minutes if I could have, Mayor, to get through as much of this as I can before the hook.
Okay, this is a request to council to extend his three minutes to five. Council does have the authority to extend the time if we so desire. Any consensus on that?
Is this the same information that you emailed us?
No.
Julianne? Ms. Williams? Five minutes? Okay, it is. Now, we put it at five minutes. Now, Mr. Weber, when five minutes is up, the time is up.
I'll be waiting for the hook.
Yeah, okay. I have to do that. One of the biggest criticisms this council gets is how long these meetings are, and I'm constantly being asked to enforce.
As you know, I only show up here when it's an issue that has to do with the Rainbow River.
Okay, okay.
All right. So. The Rainbow River has had many, some of them you're familiar with. There's the Rainbow River Aquatic Preserve, there's the Rainbow River Swim Plan, there's, I'm going to have to look at, I'm sorry. There's the Rainbow River Aquatic Preserve Plan. These are very detailed, some of them are 100 pages long. There also is a restoration plan, which I will mention in my presentation. This is an executive summary of a restoration plan. You have a couple of pages from it, but this is about 150 pages long. This was done by the Florida Springs Institute. So there is a formal, reviewed restoration plan already in existence. And I would point out that it doesn't include anything about vacuuming hydrola or anything else. It basically has to do mostly with water quality. Okay, now what I'd like to do is take you through the document you have in front of you, and the pages are numbered, so I'll do it as quickly as I can. I apologize if it seems a little tedious, but what I'm trying to do is give you as much of the science as I possibly can in five minutes, which I realize is impossible. Okay, we're going to begin. If you open the green folder that presented to you, and you'll see a document, which is the Rainbow Springs Aquatic Preserve Restoration Plan. It was done by the Florida Springs Institute, and you'll note there's some yellow underlined statements in there. And I think to summarize what that says is there are two major issues that lead to impairment. The Rainbow River has been declared impaired by the Florida DEP, and there's one primary reason why it's impaired, and that is because of an increase in nutrients. In 1960, the nutrients were 0.1 milligram per liter. Last year, they were 2.4 milligrams per liter. Today, they're 2.8 milligrams per liter. So one of the issues that leads to impairment and also an effect on the aquatic community is we have an enormous nutrient soup that's coming down the Rainbow River. So I would say that this project has no effect on that. The other issue is flow. The flow has decreased by 28% from historic levels. It used to be up at 500 million gallons per day, and now it's much less than that. So we have two issues, flow and we have nutrients. Those are the two major issues that were required to restore the Rainbow River. You can read those, I won't read through those, I was going to read a couple of them. Also, we haven't mentioned this, and this has nothing to do with the One Rate Program, but recreation activities also have a significant impact on the restoration of the Rainbow River. The second report I have is the Chris Report, it's on page three of your document, and this is a very significant, early new report. This report shows, and this is again a very technical report that I would try to go through or try to interpret, but I would tell you one thing that this report, really two things. One is that flow velocity has a huge effect on the aquatic community. And what happens is, and you can visualize this, the hotter the velocity, the faster the water is moving, the greater the impact on algae, hydrola, lymeia that are attached to the underwater plants, to the sagittary and balustrum area. So when the water slows down, which it has in the Lower River, mainly because of the English Dam, what happens is the water slows down, you get greater sediment deposition, the water velocity slows, and the ability for the water to flush itself and flush the sediments, and the algae downstream is reduced. So if you look at the upstream areas, you see that there's very little algae. As we get down to the lower area, as the velocity is decreased because the water level has increased from the English Dam, now we have a low velocity, and that is a term I'll try to give you to you, it's called residence time. The longer the nutrients are in contact with the algae, the more algae you get. So if you don't have high velocity, that algae is not being flushed down river. So this report was a very significant change in the thinking about Florida Springs. So if you look, if you look at page four, the first one, and I'll just read you the Velocity of approximately 0.22 meters per second represents an important threshold for epithetic algae cover, although algae may be present above and below. What that says, and that's the main point of this report, is that the velocity, not necessarily the volume, but the velocity is really important. The other thing in this report, which is not really germane to what I'm talking about now, is that it turns out that 90% of the water that gets to the springs is coming through conduits, which are underground tunnels through the aquifer, through the coarse topography, which gets into the spring. It's not coming from a uniform movement of water through the aquifer, it's coming from conduits, and that's another thing in this report. And how did they find that out? They do it through dye sampling. They put a dye at one end, and they see how long it takes to get to the other end. If you look on page six.
Is that five minutes? Bill, sorry.
You've got to be kidding.
Well, that's five minutes. Is that correct?
No, that can't be, that can't be, five minutes. Is it? Could I have a few more minutes just to get through some of this? How about another couple of minutes?
Bill, okay, two minutes, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Make your points, we don't need.
All right, the next thing on page eight is the Gary Report. There have been two sediment reports in the Rainbow River. One is called the Gary, the Gary Gulf Sediment Report, and what this did, this started at the head spring, went all the way down to the confluence with the Watacucci, eight course samples, 127 course samplings. And what they determined, and you'll see a summary in there, a couple of pages beyond, that there was no sand found in the Lower Rainbow River, no sand. So I went down just to confirm this myself and probed it myself and put a probe down, and you could easily put a probe down across the entire Lower River, six feet, and there was no sand. So one of the premises is we're going to plant into the sand substrate under the silt, where there is no sand under the silt. That's an important point to note. If I go on, to the recommended minimum flows, that starts on page 12. There's been a discussion, and I was up here before, talking about benthic life, things at the bottom, and here's just one statement that I'll read to you at the beginning, you'll see it's underlying on page 13. Benthic macroinvertebrates are an important part of the food chain or excellent indicator of ecosystem health. So if you're going to be vacuuming up the benthic life, you're going to be vacuuming up a big part of the food chain. So that's another issue that should be questioned in this report. Next one I have, let's see, on page 14. One of the things that the DEP did is they actually tried planting Sagittary Balustrum Area in different substrates along the river. What they found out was that in a clay substrate, the plants do not survive. So what we're talking about here is planting into a, basically a clay soil substrate, and this study shows that it's questionable whether you can get plants to survive in fine clay soil. So that's another question.
Okay, Bill, thank you very much. Thank you, Bill, that's it.
Okay. I can't go through 5,000 pages, five minutes. I'm not sure I think that's fair.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to thank Mr. Weber for trying to bring us this information, and it's probably best if it's emailed to us.
Well, a lot of it is in that report there.
I just want to thank you.
And we do appreciate it, and if you want to make a presentation, sign up for a presentation.
One more sentence.
No, no, Bill, I'm sorry.
You know, I would say this, Bill.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I have listened to one rate at a time for almost an hour.
Bill, you're out of order.
I know.
You go to your seat.
But it's just not fair. I think the council has an obligation to find out what the facts are.
Chief, if you continue. Okay, is there anyone else signed up?
I don't have anyone else signed up.
Okay, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up, name and address, please.
Three minutes, I know. My name is Samuel Martian. I live at 19293 St. Patrick's Drive. Moved here in January, always liked to know, moved to Mokal, had a house built on St. Patrick's Drive there. We like that area over there with the Greenway Trail. But I have a complaint about the road. I don't mind it, it's a line rock road, I knew it was when I bought the lot and had the house built. My complaint is the people that ski down the road that have no consideration for the speed limit at 15 miles an hour. When they go down that road, they're driving at like 30 to 40 miles an hour, and the dust just flies everywhere. And it's all over my house, yard, furniture, outside furniture, and it always happens in the spring and the fall for baseballs, mostly the baseball people. You get a lot of morning traffic that go to the RC Remote Control Airport that's over there, and the parking lot that's over by the ball field. Those people drive respectfully, 15 miles an hour, which is the speed limit. Very little dust flies up when you drive that speed. But every time when it's baseball, like spring right now, or fall on me, they're coming down there again, and they just fly down the road, and that's between 5:00 and 9:00 o'clock at night, back and forth. And then on, that's like anywhere between Monday through Friday, or any given day, they come down there. And on Saturday, it's like 9:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, of just constant dust, because they just fly down the road. I have two proposals that I'd like to see done. I know I'm kind of amazed that the roads there have been asphalted years ago because of the traffic that goes down that road. And I know it's a residential neighborhood, but you get a lot of, I call it three traffic, because you get up to 100 vehicles that come down that road on the ball field days. And on Saturdays, all 6:00 bills, every game's on everyone in bills down there. My proposal is that either law enforcement comes in there and gives out speeding tickets and radar the people, and maybe they'll tell their other friends, hey, I got a ticket for racing down this road, you know? And to see if it's the money from all the people that ski down there to give out speeding tickets. Or my second proposal is, if it says it can't be asphalted, I know it takes money to do that, I know that. So my proposal is put like on heavy-duty rubberized speed bumps every 500 feet on St. Patrick's Drive, all the way up to the ball field, to slow the people down.
Okay, thank you. There's the timer.
Okay.
The timer got messed up while I was trying to fix it for Mr. Weber.
All right.
I'm done anyway, those are my people.
So let me clarify your points.
Okay.
Is your point, your concern of the condition of the road and the dust?
No, it's not the condition.
Or is your point about people not obeying the speed limits?
Obeying the speed limit, it's the dust, that's my complaint. The road, you guys, they came in there about, I think about a month ago or maybe two months, and graded it, they came in there and graded, so they keep it. But as soon as they graded, whenever, before potholes, they were going slow. But as soon as they got graded, they're flying down the road now again. So, but some people still fly down the road even though there is potholes.
I love it. So since we have done a better job grading the roads now, we're going to start grading the speed limits.
May I ask?
How do you want?
Yes, go ahead. I just pulled up St. Patrick's Drive on my cell phone. So do you live closer to the end of the baseball field or closer to the?
I live where the power lines run now.
Okay, so.
I'm right there.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We do appreciate it. Dan Allen Heights is an area that we're very concerned about, and we spend a lot of time discussing it. Thank you.
Trying to figure out how to pay for it.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Here's your opportunity to speak. Yes, Tim?
Tim Iske, 12140, Maple Street, here in Dan Allen. The other item with the Rainbow River is with the water, the water clarity in the Lower River is often less than 10 feet. With the flow velocity impacted by the matrales and the English Dam, and flow continuing to define as we draw more water from the aquifers, we're way lower than the historic levels, and we have, the different studies have shown that ill grass more than likely will not survive with, once the vacuum happens and it's just left with the clay at the bottom. And then once with low flows and all that, then more than likely lymeia and hydrola will also return as part of what the studies that Bill has shown everybody has done, or will do. So it's in question whether vacuuming up lymeia and hydrola is going to be long-term effective anyways, because as the flows reduce and the water clarity reduces, the lymeia and hydrola more than likely will continue anyways. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Would anyone else like to speak? Because once we leave item number one, we will then get into the agenda, and you'll have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. So if there's anything you want to say, now's your opportunity to say it. Okay, please make note that the public has been given their opportunity to speak and took advantage of it. We go to Agenda Item Number Two, it's board reports. Any board reports, Ms. Odom?
Well, Julie's, Julie's.
Yes, come on up. The Arvel? How are you doing?
I don't really have a report, just a couple of comments. At our last meeting, the planning commission reviewed a couple of site plans, and they'll be coming before the council. It has to do with the Dinkins property and also property down from Dinkins where there's a proposed auto repair center that will be built there. Also, at our next meeting, we hope to have our review completed for the short-term rentals. So it's been quite delayed, as you know. Most of it of our time has been receiving public comment, which has been extensive. But we feel that this next meeting, we should be able to complete that and forward that to council. Thank you.
So do you think the short-term rentals will come to us sometime in December?
Yes.
With a finished recommendation?
I'm sorry?
With a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak before we go on? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Those who know me, I'm E.J. Raines, I'm a police corporal with the Dan Allen Police Department, and I came tonight to speak. Hear me better? Usually I'm pretty loud. I came tonight to speak as to the board for the pension. I understand that that's something that's on the agenda for later on tonight. And Mr. Jay Easton came and gave a presentation in the past, and I thought tonight would be a good opportunity to kind of give more of a layman's understanding of this. Jay's a really smart guy, he's smart, he's a stockbroker, but he's way up here. So I'm one of the ones who spearheaded the effort to increase the multiplier, so I wanted to speak to that matter, just to bring some further understanding to our recommendation as well as addressing some of the objections and including any of the facts that I've learned in my research. And I'll go over some of these things quickly with you, and then if you have any questions, you let me know. As to the objections, I've heard the first is that other professions do not have pensions, therefore there's no need to improve ours. As I reflected on this, I liken it to the analogy of proposed efforts for the improvement of the Rainbow River by those who live along it and use it recreationally. Those of us who don't live on or use the river may say many of us don't have a river in our backyard or use it, I don't see why we should improve it. These two arguments are equally irrelevant. Some professions have pensions, law enforcement is one of those, it's standard to have a pension. That's part of the job, that's one of the aspects that attracts officers to the higher-risk profession, risking their lives, suffering from physical, emotional, and mental stresses, lower life expectancy, and many of the other challenges that come with the job. Whether or not you agree that you should have a pension, or you believe that other professions should have a pension but don't, it hasn't a place in this consideration. The reality is, we do have a pension, and the sole purpose is to benefit members. The second argument I've heard is that this could be a financial risk to the city if the city were to be required to contribute to the plan in the future. This is extraordinarily unlikely based on our research, which I'll share along with other facts to take into consideration. Upon our most recent actuarial evaluation, we found our pension fund in the neighborhood of 300% funded, which is unheard of. Many pension funds fall short of 100% funding. Our multiplier of 2.5% is the lowest of any of the agencies we researched, as the standard is 3% or better. Any less than 3% is very uncommon, and is another negative aspect of consideration for our career or our agency, in addition to our other salaries. Legislation has been enacted to require a minimum of 2.75 going forward. However, established plans were grandfathered in, and therefore ours was an exception to that law. None of the agencies we researched with a multiplier of 3% or better were anywhere near as well-funded as we are. Our city currently, and for many years, has contributed 0%, $0.00, schools and pension fund, which is also unheard of. Our agency has a starting pay of approximately $37,000, which is nearly $10,000 less than the average of surrounding agencies. And I thought tonight, with the information that's coming forward, especially with the opinion letter I believe you all received from the attorney, Mandy had requested that, but I think you'll find the opinion letter by the city's pension attorney is clearly biased toward avoiding any risk whatsoever to the city. It is true that the financial market has taken a downturn, and all investments have suffered. We requested an actuarial evaluation cost study on increasing the multiplier, the opinion of which was that it was strongly recommended that we do increase our benefit. When the actuary does this cost study, he's factoring in long-term trends, including the current downturn of the market and positive changes that will come in the future. The purpose of this pension plan is solely to benefit the members of the plan. The money can be used for nothing else. Furthermore, the money is expected to be used. The actuary has advised us that we have such a surplus that we are strongly encouraged to use some of the excess to benefit the members. With such an excess, we are at risk of the state discontinuing the funds that are contributed toward the plan as they're not needed. The chapter money contributed by the state has helped to grow our plan to the surplus that it is now, as well as support the position of the city to continue contributing nothing to the plan. This surplus does serve as a safety net to a certain extent, however, there is no risk to this safety net by using a portion. As of the study, we had over $850,000 in surplus assets, and this improvement to the plan will only reduce that by about 25% while maintaining that the city will have no required contribution. The continued chapter money that we receive from the state will replenish that within four or five years, putting us right back where we are. Even if some highly unlikely unforeseen by the experts event occur that require the city to contribute, that's what the remaining surplus is there for. Those surplus assets will be drawn from to cover the city's contribution. It's nearly impossible that this would ever happen. So initially, we investigated increasing the multiplier to 3.5% or even 4% because there's such a surplus. The actuary found that either of those could be accomplished with no contribution from the city. And after much discussion, we decided to be conservative and propose only an increase of 3% from now, as it would be an improvement that the city would surely approve without any reservation. In discussions after our vote for that 3%, I learned others privy to the information considered would have pushed for 3.5, and they believe our union would have demanded 4% given the financials that we have. We've presented a very conservative proposal, and all the experts in the industry concur this should be a no-brainer and an easy decision. To say no to this is to continue to pay the police officer well below the rates of surrounding agencies, maintaining a lower benefit in our pension plan than any of the surrounding agencies, while reaping the benefit of making no contribution because to some of the attorney's positions I read it, you could possibly be taking a risk and technically you don't have to. So, sorry. Just wrapping up, I'm sorry I interrupted. So I did go ahead and contact the PBA. So I did go ahead and contact the PBA. The attorney said in that letter that they would need some sort of consent because it is a made-for bargaining item. So I've reached out to them and I'm working on getting their consent for the change to be made without their bargaining. Of course, if we can't agree on it in the process that we're going through now, then there is obviously the risk that the members of the plan could bring the PBA back in to bargain for the improvements, which would likely be bargaining at a higher rate and then of course there'd be legal representation and negotiation that would incur a significant cost to the city that's not been budgeted for. So in closing, our officers continue to work for far less money and understand that the city's tight budget prevents well overdue raises to be competitive. However, our pension is better funded than any we've encountered and more capable of providing a standard 3% benefit just to be on par with other agencies while salaries are still severely lacking. While understand the city's pension attorney has an interest in protecting any risks to the city, I ask you to consider the information that I presented and the cost study by the actuary, which shows that there is no credible risk to the city and on the contrary, it is in the best interest of the pension and the city to use the surplus funds that we use for the benefit for the members they so greatly deserve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for me?
Are you going to be here during the, number 10, during the?
Yeah, I can stick around if you want to open that backup conversation on the agenda item and if you have questions at that point, I'll be glad to stay around for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Going once, going twice, okay. We conclude number one, public comments. We were at board reports. We were at board reports, weren't we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other board reports?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, we're going to number three. Dan Allen Chamber of Commerce.
Judy Twilliger. I'm Judy Twilliger. I'm the executive director of the Dan Allen Chamber Business Association. We have a new member, Majestic Meadows, and we have a bunch of upcoming events. November 15th, from 1:00 to 3:00, there's a drawing class at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op and the cost for that is $40 per class. On November 16th, we have from 11:00 to 1:00, it's a Watercolor Wednesday at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op and that is $40 per class and a $10 material fee. On the 19th, the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op has Santa's Lake Art Class from 11:30 to 3:30. That's $35 plus $15 for materials. November 20th, we have Tea with Santa from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Sweetie's Cafe and Tea House and that is $20 per person. On November 29th, we, from 1:00 to 3:00, there's another drawing class at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op and that's $40 a class. On December 3rd, we have the First Saturday Market in the Park from 9:00 to 2:00 at Ernie Mills. And then on that same day, from 2:00 to 5:00, we have Santa at the park. And then after that, at 6:00 p.m., is the Christmas Parade. And I also like to announce that we have postponed our duck race until January 28th at 9:00 a.m. at Swampies.
What time was the Sweeties at?
11 to, this is 20, 11 to 2.
So this is the new date for the duck race?
This is the new date for the duck race, yep.
Very good.
And I could really quickly, I just wanted to thank Valerie and Anita for their service. And I loved working with you girls, so thank you so much. And I also wanted to congratulate Tim and Wally and Julianne. And I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you so much.
You get to come back next month and see us too.
Oh, okay.
So thank you, sweetie.
You're welcome.
Moving on to number four, Ms. Odom, department head reports.
Yes, sir. I have just a couple of things. Okay, council, we were contacted by Marion County about Marion County Capitol Day that's hosted by the Board of County Commissioners. If you will put this on your calendar and we'll also send you a reminder, it's to be held on 3/29/23 at the South Plaza of the Capitol Complex in Tallahassee. More details will be forthcoming as they put the event together, but just they asked us to have you save the date because they will be inviting all of the municipal elected officials to the event. There's that. So the shade shelters, Chuck Dillon, who most of you probably know is a local contractor here in Dan Allen, a licensed contractor, he has asked for us to allow him to help us with the construction of the two shade shelters. And he's willing to do it for the cost of materials only and the cost to, for the concrete footers for the two shelters. And right now, that cost looks to be around $4,800 for the materials and we're waiting on the quote for the footers still. So that's definitely going to put it over the $5,000 mark, but still probably in the range of about $10,000, 10 to 15, we're estimating for both shelters would be the total cost. And we have $30,000 budgeted for that line item. So because I'm, because I'm sure it's going to go over the 5,000 and would need council approval, I'd like to ask that you put this on your agenda for Monday and approve an up to, not exceed amount so that we don't have to keep bringing this back to you.
Well, I would say put it on, put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Let us discuss it.
And other than that, just a reminder that you have a CRA meeting on Monday at 5:00. Don't forget about that. And I also got confirmation from the supervisor of elections that the, that he will be certifying the election results on November 18th. That will be the official certification. And I think that's it for me. What you got, Troy?
Good evening, council. And I'm sorry for being late, but I had a long, busy day, so I'll make it short and sweet for you. Recently, we had a group meeting with Georgina and Councilman Kovach, myself, Jam Smith, reference to the T-Mobile grant that is in progress. Georgina is writing the grant. We received multiple quotes to give us baseline budgetary numbers for putting in the kayak launch right here at City Hall. So the next step is developing a site plan, which will be brought to council hopefully by December for approval. So if we do get the grant, we can start moving forward with that. Okay? Yesterday, I attended the TPO, actually a TAC meeting. That's the Transportation Advisory Committee that I sit on for the TPO boards. We were informed that there are multiple million and billion-dollar fun pots available for infrastructure, roads, you name it, anything to deal with transportation, storm waters, all of that stuff. So we were provided a packet. I will start digging into availability for road grants for the city. Okay? And other than that, operations have been normal. Everything's been going well. The bucket truck, I got word yesterday that all the parts have been received. They're waiting on the actual bucket itself, but we should have it back by the end of November. Okay?
Okay, very good. Anything else?
Not for me, not right now unless the council has questions.
Okay, Ms. Odom?
Jan?
Counsel, I just have one item. Sometime ago, when the 125 Park project was canceled, we were directed to write letters to the donors requesting to keep the funds to be used for parks. We refunded, we ended up refunding no, close to about $4,000. And so the rest we are able to retain to use as requested strictly for parks. What I'm requesting today is to allow Troy to use $20,457.82 for anything needed in parks for this year. It wasn't budgeted. I would be bringing a budget amendment forward to bring this money into the current year budget if you consent to do that. But these are funds, we have it on record, that the donors we were able to contact gave us permission to keep. In fact, one of the donors was Duke Energy and they donated $5,000, which on their side it was a grant to the city, to be used strictly for something educational, which is now taking place at Ernie Mills Parks and Native Plants with some educational signage. Of course, credit is given to Duke Energy as the donor for that little area, but we want to move forward with being able to use this money to benefit our parks.
Troy, just real quick, how much was new playground equipment?
We looked at multiple different sets. They start anywhere from $150,000 to $350,000. But the $20,000 in donations will allow us to upgrade the safety mulch, the required mulch around the bases of the playgrounds and restore some of the playground equipment that we have to get us a few more years on there. So absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Use your microphone. Oh, I'm sorry. A resident on Bostick Street mentioned to me about the possibility of putting speed bump, a speed bump by the playground because they are concerned about the speeders on the street, especially in that area. So I just wanted to bring it up.
And that wouldn't, these donated funds wouldn't be used for something like that? It wouldn't? No, this, this should be for park improvements whereas we have some roads, some tax money, gas tax money that if we can put in a speed bump, we could use that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to bring it up, talking about parks, and I just don't know what she had mentioned to me.
Jan, the question I have is the money that we were able to keep from the 125 Park that was discussed with Marion County has the grease to get the discussion going on the restroom?
No, no, sir. That was CRA money that was put together with this, with these donations for the 125 Park. That $23,000 was strictly CRA money. That's what you committed to Marion County as additional monies.
So the $28,000 we came up with was from where?
The $23,000 was from CRA funds. The CRA back account.
Okay.
See, when, when we budgeted for the, for the 125 Park, $23,000 was coming from CRA and $24,507 were donations. Put together that budget for that 125 Park over three years or so was $47,507.
I understand.
Those two pots of money. So what, what we did was you gave the CRA money, the $23,000, or I should say council, committed the CRA money, the $23,000 only. We could not commit the donations. That's not what we, we collected that for.
Okay.
It was collected for a park and we had to ask permission to be able to keep it because it was not the city's money.
Okay, so you clarified it. The money, part of the money we're going to retain for our parks, part of the money would go to the restroom?
Yes, sir. There is $175,000 budgeted in CRA for the bike path. I don't have it in front of me.
No, it's for the restroom.
Multi-modal path.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Council mayor, if I may, thank you, Jan, for bringing up the multi-modal bike trail. I was contacted by Marion County and the engineering firm doing the multi-modal bike trail blueprints at this time about additional lighting along that portion in that side of Pennsylvania Avenue. And right now, we are trying to see what kind of overhead additional street lights we can put to make it a better lit area, especially around where any crosswalks will be added in. So as that, as the plans are nearing completion, I hope to have a set or a conceptual set for council's review as soon as possible.
So just real quick, so that would be a great opportunity for the same type of lights that we're putting in our historic district to continue down that way?
No, no. The lighting that we're looking into for the historic district is a solar light on a individual.
So it's going to be strong enough?
Right. These are the, the street lights. The LEDs, Duke Energy upgraded all of our streetlights to LEDs. So we'll be adding on the poles that are missing or adding additional lighting in the crosswalk areas. And of course, it all hinges on what the budget will allow when the plans are completed, so cuts may be made.
I like my vision better.
Right, thank you.
Excuse me.
So do I have direction to start preparing a budget amendment to bring these donations into the budget so Troy can go crazy and spend it?
Yes, put it on the, put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Ms. Odom?
I just remembered one more thing that Michelle reminded me of. There's a new Little League president, Tim Burke, that will be here on December 7th at your workshop to introduce himself as the new league president and provide improvements on the, or provide update on the improvements that Marion County is working on at the park. And mayor, I don't know if you planned to speak to our site visit the other day at Blue Run Park?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, we'll wait till council comments.
Council comments, yes, that's on my list.
And Georgina will not be here tonight, so she won't have any updates tonight. Hopefully Monday, whatever report she was planning on giving, she'll give you on Monday. And I'll have chief later.
Thank you, ma'am.
Come on down.
Come on down. The price is right.
Hello, chief.
No costs. Any of you remember him? Anybody know that Nicole is on her way?
Yeah.
We should have tomorrow morning, probably between 9:00 and 11:00. Wind gusts 30, 35 miles an hour, going to be for a few hours, rain two to three inches. So, but Marion County has not been declared a emergency area by the governor, but we are prepared. Talking with Troy today, we put sandbags for self-serve and some people did come get some of the dirt and Troy has made sure that the generators are fired up just in case power goes out for any long period of time, as everybody knows now. We do have batteries on all the lights except for one, I believe, batteries, yes, for the red lights. So if you go beyond a certain time, we have the generators ready to be put out to keep our traffic decent flow. And that's all I got about the storm and we're on call. Certain people are on call in case we are needed to be called out. Any questions?
Sounds good. Yes?
I just was wondering if you could speak to the sign outside of Brandon Bank on the median, the electronic sign that has not appeared to have a message. Is that something that we're going to be utilizing or what's the status of that sign?
The sign is, we do use it from time to time and is specifically got to be to movement of traffic. The Lord, we just can use it as a message board that we're having a bake sale downtown. It's like if we, when we have different events downtown and we detour the traffic, we can put that on there, but we're having an event, the traffic is detoured. We do need a new sign. We call several of the letters, no longer work that sign. I forget how old it was. It is. So, but we keep it there because really we don't have any places to put it.
Oh, so it's sort of being stored on the median until an event comes that we then use it to notify the public? Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I'm good. Any other question? Hey, Ms. Odom, are we finished with our reports on our department heads?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, now we're going to go. All right, now we're going to go to one of the presentations, item number five. Welcome, Art Jones, one rake at a time.
Hello, council. Yes, and sorry to see you go and congratulations to replacements. I'm sure everyone will continue to work together. On one rake at a time, as you saw, hopefully in the newspaper, the grant that we were awarded to do the survey got called back. The governor didn't sign it by September 30th, so all 230 grants that have been awarded got put back into the legislative pot. So we have to wait and apply for it again in November. So this kind of slowed us down a little bit, but we're still moving forward. And I want to make something very clear. The reason that we're trying to get this survey done is that we need a professional survey. I wish we could just use amateur surveys, surveys that didn't cost us anything, someone just going out to the river, poking the, you know, the bamboo pole down, saying, hey, this is what I found, so we need to do this. It doesn't work that way. The restoration of the Rainbow River is very, very serious business. As you know, it is so important to this town and it hasn't really been cleaned up or taken care of in a long time, since when the miners came in and took all the phosphate out and they dredged everything, they didn't really have any regulations, so they just sort of left it when they got done. The reason I'm trying to get this professional survey done is to look at all those reports that Mr. Viver was carrying on about and let's look what is still valid today. Let's see what exactly is there today so we can do a pilot project and let's see if we can bring the river back. There's been some discussion about clay. Well, some of that clay came from the mining. Does that clay need to be removed? Does that clay need to be ignored and just stay there? Or does that clay need to be encapsulated? So that's something that only a professional survey can look at and show where everything is, and then once that survey's done, then it goes to DEP and the Army Corps and all the professionals to look at that very, very closely and say, okay, this is what we think can help the Rainbow River with clarity. This is what we think can help the Rainbow River with getting rid of lympia algae, what can help the Rainbow River to control hydrilla so we don't have to spray it forever. So let's try it this way. But it's going to be the agencies that dictate this. You know, they may say, you know, do this or that, and when they come up with a plan, then we're going to have time for public comment. You know, they come up with a plan. So it doesn't mean that they just dump it on us, they'll say, okay, public comment. This is what we suggest. This amount of clay in Blue Cove perhaps needs to be encapsulated. We need to put a layer of sand on top of that so we can plant eelgrass, so we can stop all that phytoplankton from coming out of Blue Cove and going right down the Rainbow River and affecting all the clarity in the Lower Rainbow River. So that's what my plan is about, you know? It's like being really, really careful. Let's do the very best job we can and, you know, we need a professional survey. This needs to be professional. It's serious business here. And so I just wanted to let you know, because I know the elephant in the room is there's been some letters going around about, oh, this is that, this is that. And to me, some of the survey that was done, sort of a Mickey Mouse survey, like I say, is unprofessional. It has no credibility when you go forward and apply for a permit from the DEP. They want to see a professional survey. It's like when you go to sell your house, do you just hire your neighbor who says, oh, I'll survey that for you? Or do you get a professional survey? So that's what we're doing here. And a professional survey is not cheap. That's why this costs money. We got to pay for it. We want it done right, and it's going to cost some money. So that's what I'm raising money for. And all we want to do is, once we get this survey, let's look at doing a pilot project. You know, let's make sure it's going to work. You know, the other speaker said something about, oh, you can't even grow eelgrass down there in the Lower Rainbow River. Well, we have eelgrass growing there already and we have sand there already. So let's not argue about those points. Let's get a professional survey done and then move forward from there and look at a pilot project, go a little bit at a time. I think some people don't understand the way your dredging process works. It's like we don't go down there and we just clean out the whole bottom of the river, take everything out and leave it on the shoreline. No, everything has to be professionally done up to DEP standards. It's very careful when we do that. We're not taking out benthic life or anything like that. And if there's sand there, we leave that alone. We're just going for the silt, we're going for what is targeted by our permits that we're allowed to remove. Like I said, we've done this in Crystal River, it's been phenomenally successful, but even in Crystal River, we had a lot of negative Nancy's that said it wouldn't work. They're like, oh my God, you're going to disturb the manatees, the manatees aren't going to like it, they're going to kill manatees. And the reality was, when we get done with that and we got more eelgrass planted, we have the healthiest herd of manatees in the state of Florida. The water clarity has improved, we don't have to use herbicides or sprays down there anymore, and that's my dream for the Rainbow River. One thing that people don't talk about is, do we want to just spray the Rainbow River forever? Or do we want to overcome that and find a better way? And let's just take a look. It's never been cleaned up since the mining days. It's overdue, so let's give it a try.
Is that it, Mark?
That's it. If you've got any questions-
Sure, thank you, Jan.
After he sits down, I got to make another statement.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, a question. I agree with you 100%. Professional survey needs to be done. However, I don't understand the cost of, what is it, $120,000 for this initial survey? Is that correct?
$137,500.
I don't understand why some other professional entity in fact could not do that survey for, I would imagine at price, for example, Gary Gulf Archaeological Research Institute, which did the survey in 2007, they are still in business, they still have the equipment, they have the vessels, and they have the ultrasound to do the sonic readings of the bottom. Have they been consulted and asked what they have been charged? Also, I made a phone call to US Geological Survey stationed at the University of Florida. They have graduate students who would take on the survey for a really low cost. Have you looked into anything like that? Because you are asking for funding and how wisely are you using the money that people are contributing to solely the survey?
Very good question, Jan, very good. Yes, we've looked at all of those reports I've done and we've looked at what each one of those groups of people can do surveying.
That's what I'm talking about, talking about now. Talking about now.
Okay, so Jan, I'm not going to interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me. We've read all of their reports and when you look at what the Gary people can do and what the university people can do, it's limited. They have specialties. The people that we hired do a full, broad survey.
That is not true.
They do the vegetation, don't please. They do the vegetation survey, they do the survey of the bottom of the benthic mats, they survey the lympia, the hydrilla, they look at the shorelines, what kind of erosion's coming in. It's a complete survey. And on top of that survey, what's included in that price is a work plan. How would you cure it? How will you clean it up? And in that work plan, it also has to include is, okay, if you are authorized by DEP to do it and you do want to plant eelgrass, who's going to plant the eelgrass? So there's very few companies that do the full package. We picked Sein Shoreline because I trust them. They've done it in Crystal River, they've proven to me, they're professional, they do it right, they're sensitive to everybody in the city and neighborhoods. They're now doing it down in Homestead Springs. Once again, very successful. So they're the people that I chose to do it and they're the people that my nonprofit organization is going to hire to do that survey if we get the funds because we trust them. They do the full package. So they do the work plan, everything else goes through DEP. They're also certified up there, they're known in Tallahassee, so we're more likely to get the funding to do it, to do a pilot project. Let's do it and see if it works. So yeah, I'm not going to get into anything more than that. I mean, that's why we hired you.
Yes.
Just to be real clear, and I think we're kind of maybe missing the big picture here. You are, you don't need our permission to do this project, do you?
Of course not. No, it's up to the state.
Okay, all right. So I just want to make sure that, and we have not obligated any funds to you, so therefore we have no authority to say what you can do or can't do?
Correct.
Okay, and so when we're asking questions, that we can be educated about what's going on in our own backyard or back room in this space?
Right.
You are, as a courtesy, coming to the city council. This is a great platform for you to educate not only us and our citizens, but you really don't need our blessing on this, except for the fact that we did provide a letter for you that you could present it to the state with your grant package.
Right. It's more, it's more a case of wanting you all involved, you know, wanting you to all work together. We all work together as a community and clean up the river.
Can somebody turn off their phone, please?
Sounds like a little baby crying.
I just want to make sure that I'm not missing the big picture here, but that you're just as a courtesy and an educator coming to us and-
And as a citizen-
And the state will be able to tell you what you can and can't do on that river. And if you can't plant eelgrass, guess what? You can't plant eelgrass.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I probably had the whole picture.
Yeah, yeah. So what we're looking is a pilot project first. But yeah, absolutely, you know, I live in the city. I'm one of your citizens. So I want my city to be involved. I mean, the best way to clean up the river is get everybody involved. Let's get them all together. And I don't mind people asking me questions and, you know, people coming up negative and hit me with some objections, let's just overcome them and figure out how to work together.
Amen.
Yeah, I appreciate the education piece. I know that maybe our timer is broken for presentations, but as we approach well past 10 minutes, I'm just wondering, and I appreciate the questions, but again, I don't think that we're, you know, we're getting education, we're not making scientific decisions on a river. So I'm not sure if this is going to be coming to vote at the meeting or not for donation, but I think that would be the crux of our conversation. And if we've gathered the information, as we have from Mr. Viver, who, you know, I've considered the last time he could even ask for a presentation, do we have what we need to move on? Or is this going to continue to be a scientific conversation that I'm quite frankly not really qualified to weigh in on? I appreciate the education, but I think we also have to know at what point do we move on and bring it to a vote on something that we can vote about?
Well, right now, there is no request for any donation.
Okay.
So this is simply Mr. Jones presenting his ideas and right now, we're asking, do you have follow-up questions? That's all we're doing right now. He is not making no requests at this time for any donation.
Okay, I guess it's the follow-up questions that kind of get us.
So right now, it's actually council.
That's how we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's so important, you know, the river is so important to this town. People always say how important it is. Isn't it great that we're actually talking about it? Because for how many meetings have we not talked about? Many, many. So I'm glad it's on the agenda.
So let me just make a couple of comments and Ms. Mendocas' comments are correct. We only spend so much time. It seems to me like the crux of the debate is your idea, your conception of what we can do to clean up the Lower Rainbow River is lacking some sort of scientific basis for that. But it seems to me, listening to you in the application for the survey, in order to get the survey, all those answers, questions will be answered because you're not going to be able to do a survey until it's okay by the various state entities.
No, we're not going to be able to do, get a permit until we have the technical survey with all the data and it's an extremely technical survey. They want to know everything, you know, it's hours and hours and hours.
If you give it to the questions that are being asked about the lack of scientific study, will be answered during the process.
Right, right. We're not going to do it on the cheap. We're going to do-
So no one's going out there with a vacuum cleaner in the middle of the night that no one knows anything about it.
Correct.
The other thing that I have really struggled with, and I've asked this with many people that are in part of this debate, is the Lower River. If you go on the Lower River in various areas of the Lower River and you see the white sandy areas, particularly the areas where people have swam or swum. If you get out of your boat and you go into those areas, and there's many of them, and you reach down and you grab the soil that's no longer muck because it's been dispersed because of the swimming, you get a handful of sand.
Yeah.
So I'm really struggling when people say there's no sand underneath the muck. On my dock, I can go out there, right now it's loaded with hydrilla, I need to get out there, and there's a muck layer underneath it. When I do go out there and clean it up and swim, there's beautiful sand underneath my dock.
Exactly.
So I really am struggling with the generalized, all-encompassing statement that there's absolutely no sand underneath the muck. I can demonstrate that by showing people that there is sand there. Now, how pervasive the sand is, what portion of it would remain muck, there seems to be a statement that if you continue to suck the muck up, it just continues to go indefinitely, that there's, it's like you're in an abyss of muck. You probably get down to limestone or what the original basis. But the bottom line is, the muck that we're dealing with, the extent, the extensiveness of it is a man-made issue. This has been made with the nitrates aggravated, the lack of flow aggravated. But the bottom line is, this has been created with the introduction of hydrilla in the 70s that was totally out of control and no one knowing what to do with it and the spraying of the hydrilla and invasive weeds that now die and fall to the bottom and continue to accumulate. So after 40 years, there's areas of muck that are five, five deep.
Yeah.
So the question I have is, what are we going to do? Are we going to allow it to just continue as usual? Let spraying continue, the muck, you know, it's four foot now, 10 years from now, it's five foot? I mean, what are we going to do? But I really struggle when people say, and there's no sand under the muck, because I know we're, I know that's not exactly true.
There is. Yeah, that's false. It's fake science.
And that's why we'll get the study and then if he wants to make a report, he can vote on that. My feeling is that we're moving into 15 minutes and his study is going to answer these questions about sand and man-made, and this isn't really a decision that the council is facing right now.
Right, right. Julie Anne's right. And it's not just a study, it's a survey. It's a complete survey, because we've had a lot of studies, but nothing's just brought everything together and say, okay, what exactly is there? What are our options? And the survey will include a work plan. What are our options?
Point of view?
Yeah.
I'm hearing some under the breath comments.
Oh, no, I said you're going to have so much fun. I'm sorry.
Okay. I thought it was one person speaking at a time.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
For some reason, the temperature of the room in this, just tonight, has been a little weird, so.
Yeah, it's all right.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Art, for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you for your questions and thank you for caring about the river. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we go to-
We need the chief.
Oh, Chief, you have one addition?
I did, I got to apologize to everybody.
Am I for 15 minutes of verbatim?
The governor did declare Marion County in hard to see here today. It's for participation only, so we have to, $3,800. And if it's overtime or anything like that, it can be reimbursed up to, that'd be over $3,800 for your modification.
Okay, thank you very much.
But right now, I don't think we're going to have any unless we get called out or anything. So we did, was declared for participation or whatever we have to do during the, if it's overtime or anything like that.
Is there any closures or anything like that yet?
No, no closures.
No closures of schools or anything?
Nope, the schools.
Schools?
But no government buildings.
Uh, Chief, just to be clear, because Marion County is eligible for reimbursement, now that they've been declared, does that automatically make us eligible or do we need to declare as well?
It automatically makes us eligible, but it has to be over $3,800 what we declare.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought we had to declare too. I always thought we had to declare too.
Well, that's, that's when you and the ELC will get air and find out if we have to declare.
Okay. I mean, I just wouldn't want to, you know, squash our chances.
But anything we do, we'll put Nicole's name on it if it's overtime or anything like that.
I'll tell you what the code is.
You'll code it.
Okay, thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Once again, my apologies. My lovely wife sent me a text.
Glad someone knows what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. We appreciate everything you're bringing to us. Now we go to agenda item number six, the presentation of the Dunell Unity Service. Patrick?
Good evening. I'm not here to ask, I'm here to give. And part of that giving is to thank the council, Mr. Mayor, Troy and his team, Fire Department, Police Department. Dunellon days was a tremendous success. We could not have done that without everybody helping us have that event. It is helping us feed 40 to 50 families a week. We'll be doing that now every month. And for those of you that don't have a place to go for Thanksgiving dinner, I would like to personally invite everyone here and everyone that hears me speaking. We're going to have a free Thanksgiving dinner at the campus, at Holy Faith Campus on West Luke Oak Drive. And we just, as many people come, we're going to feed you. And we're so excited about this. We've been able to have medical, free medical clinics this year. In 2023, we're going to have a free medical van that will move around the city, providing medical services. We have our food pantry that is giving food away every week, every Monday, for two hours a day. The need for this in this community has been a little bit overwhelming to me. And we're just glad to be here to serve. We're serving hundreds of people a month now with food. And it's a mission, it's a service to the community. We have more plans for the community, and I might come back and ask for money one day, but tonight, not so. I just want to thank you for supporting us and thank all of this community for reaching out to us to help the people that need help. And that's it. Thank you. You're special people, and I really appreciate you all.
One more quick.
Yes, thank you, Patrick. Yes.
Are y'all needing, I mean, I'm having things with at my house, but are y'all needing like a casserole dish or something that we could make to bring down to you?
No, we have, we have absolutely everything. Thank you so much. We have over 80 volunteers. I'll be cooking for two days.
All right.
Come on down. But thank you. I just wanted to let you know that this community, your source organization, has really exploded. And it's because of how we've been accepted in this community. And we have a lot more plans to come for next year.
And do you need any food? I mean, raw food to cook?
No, ma'am. We have all taken care of it. We have volunteer after volunteer that's raw as turkey. I don't need another turkey.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On collecting food for your food pantries, is there a specific time or day to bring food?
Yes, ma'am. Months of Wednesday and Friday. We're open for five hours, starting in the morning. And anyone that'd like to donate food to the pantry, it's greatly appreciated. I will say with you that we've aligned ourselves with the USDA, and we've aligned ourselves with two other organizations that bring us, that's a misstatement. We leave at five in the morning to go get food from these organizations. And we get, it takes about five to six hours. It takes a great big truck. Right now, we rent the truck, but we're hoping in the future we'll be able to have a truck so that we can get more food to give away to the community.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
What's the time again? I'm sorry.
Eight in the morning to noon time. And we also have emergency food. If someone were to come to me and say, I've got to feed my family today, I've got food available 24/7. And it's great for this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very uplifting. Thank you so much.
Want to make you happy tonight. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, we're leaving agenda item number six. And we're going to number seven, a review of the application for Leanne Mickelson. So Mandy, do you present that to council?
Yes. So Community Development has vacancy on the planning commission, and they received an application from Leanne Mickelson. And that was provided to you as backup for the agenda, published with the agenda last week. I'll just go over, her application review shows that she's been a resident for two years. She's had a business in Dunellon for two years. Her experience is in the field of nursing. It's a registered nurse. She has interest in improving the city and revamping the city vision and comprehensive plan and willing to take courses on ethics and sunshine law.
Is she currently in the audience, or is she going to speak to council?
No, I don't think she's here.
It'd be nice if we could at least see what she looks like.
I have had the pleasure of meeting her. She's quite a nice woman. She's very busy, but she's very nice and community minded.
That's good, that's good. Chairman, the article, are you familiar with this one?
Most of our, I do not know the address.
Can we invite her from Monday?
Sure.
Yes, I would say that, I'd say that would be very important for her to come Monday. So put her on.
We'll put her like first, so she can get in and get out.
Mayor, mayor? I just wanted to say I recruited her. She's in the women's club, and she's quite interested in serving her community. I'll just say that.
Right, I'm going to put her on the agenda for Monday. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we go to number eight, a reoccurring topic, code enforcement office position.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things that I wanted to share with you. So first of all, we did an analysis of the advertising that we did for this position, which it's going to be hard to see because these, so hard to show you spreadsheets sometimes. But just to summarize here, we advertised in the, on the city website, the Riverland, Citrus Chronicle, and the Ocalo Star Banner. That was all back in September. And the Riverland is a one-time ad plus it goes on riverlandnews.com. The Citrus County Chronicle is one time plus chronicle.com. The Star Banner is one time plus online at ocalo.com for 30 days. And Ocalo Star Banner also publishes to ZipRecruiter and all job boards free for 28 days when you publish with them. So then in October, after we had not received any qualified applicants, we re-advertised in the Riverland, we re-advertised in the Citrus Chronicle, we re-advertised in the Ocalo Star Banner, we advertised on the Florida League of Cities website, on the Florida Association of Code Enforcement website, and Career Source. As of today, is this correct? We have received three applications that have no qualifications for code enforcement. So that's just a summary of what we've done as far as advertising. And Sean, what?
Sean, who does special front page.
Oh, okay, so he, so he did. He published an article on our efforts to recruit. So I also wanted to share with you just a little bit, a quick Google search that I did to try and understand, you know, why is it so hard? How many of these jobs are there out there? So this was what I found. We, our range is $14 to $21 an hour. Crystal River is hiring 20,000 to 40,000, City of Deland, City of Mount Dora, Lateral County, City of Clermont, Longboat Key, Delray Beach, and the list goes on and on. But if you Google code enforcement jobs, if you go on the internet, you'll see the same thing I got here. So I stopped counting at 22. And, but these were all the cities and counties currently in Florida who were advertising for the same position that we're advertising for. So it's, it was, you know, it looks like we're not the only ones having the problem recruiting someone. So what I also did is I went out to the FACE certification program to try and better understand what's involved in that. And it's basically a four-part course. And the first part of that is administrative aspects. The next offering for that course is in November, but the course is full. So anybody that's looking to get their certification, and that's FAU, that's Florida Atlantic University, that is already full. Fundamentals of Code Enforcement, that's the second part, Course Overview, December 5th through 9th is the next offering, and December 12th through 6th, and they are both full. One's at FAU, one's at USF. The third here is Legal Issues in Code Enforcement. And the last offering they had was in September, and it was full. And I could not find where they were offering that again in the near future on FACE. And then the last one was Safety and Field Applications. And all of these, you know, if you want, I'd be happy to email these to you. I know I'm going kind of fast, but if you, if you're interested in looking at the details of the course overview. But this course is being offered 14th through 17th at FSU and January 23rd through the 26th at FAU, and this one was not full yet. So it appears that there may be, with the offerings of these classes, people are, and I know we experienced this ourselves when we initially, pre-COVID, were, we were discussing Dan getting his certification. And then, and then they fell so far behind in their classes because people were enrolling and they had to put off the classes, and then it just got really backed up. And it looked like that may be still there for some of the primary courses that people have to take in order to get that certification. So that's just a little bit of update information for you all just to know where we are and our efforts to try and recruit someone.
So what is staff's recommendation to council? Are we not offering enough money? What, what can we do?
I don't know that that's actually the problem. Because, you know, the other agencies that are advertising, some are part-time, some are full-time. And they're just not able to fill them. So I don't know if we were to make, if we were to make the position full-time. I mean, currently, we budgeted for 24 hours a week. $18 an hour, I think, is what we listed. We listed it as 17. It was $18 an hour.
They consider reading what we were willing to start at 17.
Okay. And I think that's what we budgeted for, either 17 or 18. So you could consider maybe raising the hourly rate for the part-time position. But if you were to, to say, well, you know, let's advertise for full-time and see if that helps get us, you know, a qualified applicant, you're going to have to take into consideration your budget because you're going to have to pay benefits, you're going to have to pay retirement.
Is there anything within our employ that would, somebody that would be interested in going to school and doing that?
Well, we post the job internally, and no one has expressed an interest, so. We post it in all the departments. We send it out to the department heads. I could take a poll and see if anybody wants to do it.
Don't scavenge for me.
I knew that was coming.
I'd be interested in part-time when I retire.
Mandy, have you talked to some of the other municipalities and find out how they're dealing with this? It sounds to me like any, any city that would have a code enforcement officer, if they would resign, retire, then they would certainly have the same problem we're having finding someone. You would think if what you're saying follows through, there's just no one out there. So have you contacted anyone else and said, what are you, what are you guys doing about it?
No, I didn't take it that far. So I know that the lady that was, sorry, sir. I know the lady that, the representative for the inspection company that we have, she was here yesterday, I believe, the day before. And I asked her about the code enforcement. And they do offer that, but it's at like, what, $80 an hour?
$60 an hour if we go through empty costly.
Yeah.
$60 an hour.
So I mean, there's that, but my gosh, talk about budget. It'd almost be less expensive to hire full-time, probably. I mean, I'm estimating, but, so anyway, so those are the only real options. And there's one other, I think there's another code company that, I'll have to remember the name of it. Michelle just reminded me of something, too. Georgina has reached out to Marion County HR on several occasions and said, hey, you know, do you have any applications that you, you didn't hire, but you know, you still have on file, would you be willing to share them with us? And they don't have any. That's what we've been told.
They have inspectors quitting right now and going public. I mean, probably.
So in the, in the meantime, we have Dan doing it 16 hours a week? Is 16 hours a week, is that sufficient for what we need right now?
Probably not. No. Not if you're looking to start. I mean, if you want someone who's just going to run around and tell you, you know, this person's grass needs to be cut, or these signs need to be, you know, pulled up. But if you really want to get into, you know, the derelict properties and revising the code, and you want somebody in that position who's, has the capability of really understanding the code and making recommendations about the code, you can't do that 16 hours a week. You can't be proactive in 16 hours a week.
And this is the thing Dan's wanting to do anyway, correct? He's not, this is what he wants to do.
He's sort of doing us a favor right now.
Right.
He's not interested in continuing to do it long-term.
Any comments from council? Basically, what staff is saying, they think they've exhausted all avenues trying to find someone who will be a part-time code enforcer in the city of Dunellon.
Qualified.
Qualified. Let us think about it, Mandy, okay? Just put it on, just put it on the agenda for discussion and let us get five days to think about it. I'll come in and talk to you and whatever. And we'll see what we can do, if there's anything to do.
Do you want to say something?
It's really perplexing to me that there's well-paying jobs for good jobs available, and you can't even get people to even apply. That's, it's a new world to me. I remember when having a good job was hard to find.
Um, I will say this, too. We, when you say, has anybody been interested? We did explore the possibility of having a dual position in the department, an officer do code enforcement. And what we found that was problematic there is it's very clear in the, in the statute that if you have an officer who receives like death and disability benefits in line of duty that are statutorily required, if that officer is working in the capacity of a code enforcement officer, they forfeit those benefits. So if, if you're an officer and you're doing code enforcement and you die in the line of duty, or you lose a limb, then you don't get that same level of benefit that you would as if you were acting as a police officer. But, you know, I'm not sure if any of the officers would be willing to, you know. If you want to speak to that, chief, I mean, I know we talked about it a little bit. But, but, and you also, you don't get credited service for retirement purposes for those hours worked as a code enforcement officer. So it's not really to their advantage to take on that role?
Well, the question I would have, if we go back to the police concept, is we have hired a part-time police hired a part-time police officer, correct?
We have, no, we have a reserve officer right now. We haven't filled the part-time.
No.
Did we fill it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Chief.
Where I'm going with this, if we wanted to go in that direction, if that part-time officer has.
You're talking about your part-time administrative assistant.
No.
Talk to us a little bit, chief.
I'll file back, uh, one of the officers, James Roberts, agreed that he would do this part-time. Uh, and when he was part-time doing code enforcement, he would be in a completely different uniform. And, uh, so that's where my suggestion with Officer Roberts would come in. He's, he would fill the position part-time or could be full-time until we got it under control. But he would, uh.
So would he still be a full-time policeman and do this, like a second job?
Uh, no, sir. He would be code enforcement because it'd be a day shift type job unless he needed to come out at night for code enforcement. But at the, at the time, we talked to him, it was a few months ago.
It's been a while back. And I thought that when we, I thought that when we discovered what we did in the statute, that that, he sort of backed off because of those reasons.
We, we didn't present that to him, but I'd be more than happy. But if he went full-time code enforcement, then.
Is he qualified? Does he have all the education?
Yes, he has the education and all. And you, as a policeman, you can be a code enforcement, and if you see a problem, then you can come back and we can send him to school later. Just an idea that I have.
I would say, chief, council or staff anticipated it was going to be this difficult to find someone.
Right.
And I think at this point, based on what Ms. Odom has said, to readdress and at least give council an opportunity to look at that original suggestion, I think it would be warranted now. So please kind of put it.
Present it Monday.
Put it in play and talk to him and let council kind of see what we want to do.
Just real quick, and Mandy, can we ask council to, Andrew, to report on Monday if there was a violation and someone wanted to oppose it if he didn't have the, I know you're saying he can be a code enforcement officer if he's a police officer, but if he doesn't have the certification and such, would that be a problem? Because I used to be on the code enforcement board, and so I knew we had to have, you know, certain things, but that was a hundred years ago. So just kind of make sure that we, we wouldn't get in any trouble if we tried, you know, we couldn't prosecute or get fines or do those kind of things.
Uh, the certification is a benefit to the city because if, if they, if something was ever challenged.
Yes.
You know, yes, well, this person is certified, they have their, you know, but it wouldn't, like, if you, if you give somebody a violation, they couldn't claim, oh, you know, you can't give me that violation because you're not a certified code enforcement officer.
Yeah, no, 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 but I'm talking about if they came back to challenge us.
I mean, they could always make that argument, but as long as we can show that our, they were following our code.
Okay, that's my, my.
Regardless of whether they're certified.
That's all I just want to make sure of.
I don't.
They could challenge a certified code enforcement.
Yeah, well, they could do that, yes. Anyway, but you understand what I was saying.
Yes, ma'am.
My thought process. Thank you.
Okay, Mandy, chief, will you please follow up?
Will do.
Would you follow up on this?
Give it to you, Mandy.
Yeah, I have a note to put it on Monday, did you?
Thank you so much. All right, we go to number nine. Very much looking forward to this one, the boat launch program. Ms. Smith?
With respect to receiving a contract from State Park, we have been working on it now for several weeks. We met with a representative, Mandy and I met with a representative from State Park today, and we have asked for specifics to go into an agreement with the city. And we have been assured that we would have a draft agreement to present to you on Monday.
Very good. And you had a meeting today?
We just had a meeting today.
And you had positive vibes?
Oh, yes.
From the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Did you let them know that it is November and we're wanting this done by April?
Uh, he said January 1st, actually. I said, well, if we can get it January 1st, absolutely. But I did mention around Easter time is when we definitely would want it implemented. But I think if we can get an ordinance done and you all agree on a contract, then it can be done simultaneously, and January 1st isn't so far out of reach.
Well, Ms. Odom, all I can say is by January 1st, we're going to have boat launch fees in place. We're going to be breaking ground on the infrastructure at, uh, at Blue Run Park, and we're going to have our weather shelters up at City Beach. So we're going to, we're going to have a lot to be happy about, right?
Um, don't hope it's January 1st, but we can, we can use that as a goal.
All right, because I, I have embedded in my mind, all kinds of good things are going to be ready by January 1st. Are you listening, Troy? It's all going to be, it's all going to be there for us.
There'll just be a few, a few more things that council will need to decide on as far as the fees. He is going to, the gentleman that we met with today, um, he's going to run some calculations because the fee, whatever you charge, say, if you want to net ten dollars per launch, then there are credit card fees, and there are processing fees, transaction fees, all kinds of stuff associated with that. So he's going to do an analysis of what we would need to charge, um, based on, do we want six dollars net, do we want ten dollars net, you know, what that cost would have to be. He said they can also work with us on a pass program if they have, um, cameras and can read tags, but I don't know that, you know, that's, that's going to be a separate discussion. But, and you'd have to establish fees for that. Uh, and then, um, the paper, what was it, Jan, the receipts?
I think we're doing receipts.
We're not doing the receipts in the window.
No, I.
But if they pay at the kiosk and they want a receipt, they'll be able to get a receipt because if you have the pay by phone or pay by, uh, the kiosk, with pay by phone, you're not going to get a receipt.
Yes, it's.
It's going to be your tag that the police are going to be looking for, not a ticket in your window. Um, so it went really good. There are some monthly recurring fees, but we think that we can, um, still come out on top in the end.
Well, my hope would be that after we pay the fees, we net ten dollars.
Right.
That's, in my mind, that's what I'm.
And that's what, we, we sort of conveyed that.
Mm-hmm.
But it's going to have to be tweaked because that could indicate a higher fee for residents and non-residents, all because of credit card fees, taxes, and the company's dollar fee that they get to retain.
Yeah.
So, and, and the survey is good, it's around the areas and what they charge, some charge twenty-five dollars to a resident.
That's what I mean. So for us, a net ten is not like we're being greedy.
No. So it, it might be kind of up there, you know, more than maybe what we initially started talking about.
I would say if the fee, based on what you're saying, was, and this would be high, it wouldn't have to be high. If it was fifteen, we'd certainly be netting ten.
Um, there's still a revenue share with the company. We would net ten, but they would still get a piece, a piece of that ten. Bottom line, we may end up with only six dollars per transaction.
All right, let's, let's.
But let's wait on his analysis and see, and we'll just have to go from there. And we talked about putting in the ordinance where we can adjust the fees. You know, we're not, we're not locked in. So if council sees that we just need to charge more, our expenses have gone up, everything's gone up in the world, we have that freedom to adjust it. It won't be, uh, the fees will not be implemented by ordinance, they will be implemented by resolution. We will just establish in the ordinance what we can and can't do.
Thank you very much. Right, that's going to be on the agenda for Monday, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's move on. We go to number 10, the Florida Municipal Pension Trust Fund. Yes, Mandy, this would be something you're going to introduce us to. We've talked a little bit about it earlier this evening.
Yes, so when the pension board moved, uh, to increase the multiplier for the police retirement plan, uh, from two and a half to three percent, there was a little bit of confusion as to what the city's obligation is when it comes to surplus money in the fund. And I tried very diligently to interpret the statute, but I'm not an attorney, so I reached out to our pension attorney, Jim Lynn, in Tallahassee, because the statute is extremely confusing. Um, chapter 185 of the Florida statutes is what governs police pensions, and, um, so, and I sent this letter out to you all, and I'll just go over it briefly. So what Jim is saying, um, is that according to the actuary, um, it would increase the retirement benefits by about 20%. And essentially what it does is it brings down the surplus and increases the liability in the plan when you do that. So as a mandatory subject of bargaining, even if you are giving them something, you know, offering them a benefit or an additional benefit, because if it's a mandatory subject of bargaining, it has to be agreed to by the, by the PBA. He speaks to the, the last actuarial valuation, which was as of October 1, 2021. The assets of the plan are 3.2 million and liabilities are 2.3 with a surplus of 856,875. But he states that the plan ending September 22nd, we won't have that valuation for several months still, and that surplus could be impacted by any investment losses that we may have taken during that year. And, and we just won't know what that is until that valuation is finalized. He goes into, um, the city is ultimately responsible for the liabilities of the plan and for funding the normal cost of the plan regardless of the fund status. So the plan has been so well-funded for so many years now, I don't think we, um, I can't remember ever, the city ever budgeting for a contribution. I think there was one year back, gosh, 10, 12 years ago, that they, and I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly why, but we had to make contributions for like one year, and that was it. And we haven't done that since.
And how much was that?
It was about $24,000 that year. Yeah, I want to say it was not 24,000 that year, um, which is far, far less than what the city would be contributing if we were still with FRS, which is why the city opted out of FRS back in the late 90s because the contribution rates were outrageous. Um, I looked it up, and the current contribution rate for a special risk category employee is about 28% right now. So if we were with FRS, we would be paying the state 28% of police salaries every year. We would be required to do that. So, uh, he goes on to say, um, what we received last year in excise tax revenue, um, and this year, last year it was 59,628, this year it was 53,049. And like I said, section, or chapter 185, uh, section 18535 sets forth the rules of how that premium tax money must be used. Then it goes on, and this is where the confusion was, is it tells you, oh, you have to do this, and you have to do that, and you have to come to mutual consent and this and that, and with the bargaining unit, but then it gets into notwithstanding, and that's where it becomes kind of clear. You may deviate from all of this that it's telling you you have to do by mutual consent of the members of the collective bargaining unit. So back in 2018, when the city bargained with the PBA, they did come to mutual consent, and there was a pot of money that was, um, identified as of October 1st, 2018, um, it was half of that. So there was a sur, there was, I'm sorry, y'all, I don't remember exactly going back that far, how that number was, how, how it came about, but the mutual consent agreement basically stated that the city and the union mutually agreed that that pot of money that was going to be used, half of it to fund a share pa, share plan for the police department, which is basically like a 401 or 457 plan, that you just put money and it sits there. So you take that 34,000, 248, you got 10 officers, you split it 10 ways, and they all get a piece of it, and it just sits in like a savings account. And then when an officer leaves, if they're not vested, uh, you have to be 10 years to be vested to be able to take that money with you or ever get a benefit out of the plan, then they forfeit that amount and it gets reallocated to the current members of the plan. And in addition to that, uh, mutual consent, the, the other 50% of that money, which was another 34,000, um, could be used to fund future contributions of the plan. So the city and the union mutually agreed, all chap, all annual chapter 185 premium tax revenues shall be used to offset future city contributions to the retirement plan. So unless the mutual agreement is renegotiated, there shall be no annual allocation of premium tax revenues to the share plan. So that was the one-time allocation to the share plan. It didn't say any future contributions had to be split 50/50, um, and, and that's, that's what, that's what was negotiated. So at this point, just in conclusion, I'll just jump straight to that because it, it's, it's a lot to absorb. The city is not obligated to act on the pension board's recommendation by law. Um, as a sponsor of the retirement plan, you are to ensure that the fund is funded on a sound actuarial basis, um, and that the surplus does not create a legal obligation to use of that to provide additional benefits. However, if the, if the city decided to do this, there is not an out-of-pocket expense to the city. As far as, it wouldn't come out of our budget, it would reduce the surplus in the plan and increase the liability of the plan. And the actuary does not feel like, at any point in the near future, that would put us in a position to where we would have to contribute. On the other hand, you do have the union, and if the union does decide that they want to bargain for this benefit, then it will cost the city some money. It will cost you money and, uh, labor costs to represent the city in negotiations with the union.
And I have been to those negotiations with the union more than once with the police department, so I, I'll talk on that just a second. They can get wrong. And the last one we did, I think in 2018, if I'm not mistaken, we had to have a special meeting in the room over there, and then we, I mean, I remember us having to have a lot of attorney fees back and forth, and it was not an inexpensive endeavor to negotiate. And we, we did negotiate, because I remember you sitting at that end, that's the only time I remember this.
Yeah, and you're probably talking about an executive session that was.
Yes, executive session, yeah, sorry.
The negotiations.
Which is.
That's one of the two times that council can meet in the shade and, um, and hold an executive session when it comes to, uh, negotiations with the party.
So I forgot that word, executive.
Yeah.
Mandy, okay.
But so, I mean, in, in all honesty, I think it would be in our, I mean, right now, the state legislature, legislation is at 2.7, and we got grandfellowed in, um, for what reason, I have no idea, but we did. I mean, I'm in favor of doing the 3.0 because if we don't, you know, I don't, I just would hate to see us have to go back to the negotiation table. And like I said, the police officers do get paid less than, and, and when I did my research, it showed that basically every other department does, did the 3.0, and, um, what is it, the, I mean, a lot of them are up at four points, so I really think doing the 3.0 is probably in the best interest for the city. We're not going to lose money, and it's to say thank you to our police department, officers, sorry.
So, Mandy, let me just, number one, you said, according to the attorney's letter, that we still don't have the figures yet to really know for sure what kind of shape funds are in, based on?
As of, as of October 1st of this year.
Right, so right now, we're still waiting for those figures, right?
Right.
So a request is being asked before we have those figures, correct? So that's problematic. So that's problematic. I'm interested in some of the terminology that is being used, like the word surplus. What surplus means is overfunded.
Correct.
Right? It's overfunded, which creates the surplus.
Right.
Right? So the only reason there's a surplus is being overfunded. And then when we talk about if there is a shortfall in the pension, the city will then have to make a contribution. But the contribution is a, an acronym for an expense, correct? So we don't say expense, we say, we're going to have to make a contribution. So I'm just kind of, this is something new, and like you said, it's something very complicated. It's something that sticks with the city forever. I certainly am in no position right now to make a decision of something that has this importance without spending a whole lot more time analyzing this, that's for sure. You're tying the city into a long-term agreement that, I'm nowhere near where I need to be to make a decision like that, especially not having the figures and whatever. So that's just, that's just my statement on that.
And I can, I can reach out and find out how soon we'll be able to get our valuation back from the actuary. I want to say it's probably going to take another month or so. But I, I mean, if, if council would like to wait until that comes in and revisit this, we could do that.
Well, is this, is this being discussed now to educate council, or is the, is the purpose trying to get us to vote on something then when we, when we don't have the information we have?
Well, more or less, it would be, you're, you're giving us direction that you support it and to move forward, because what we would need to do is we would need to reach out to the union and get an agreement with them to increase the multiplier. And then we would have to involve our planning administration, the Florida Municipal Pension Trust, to prepare the documents necessary to amend the plan. So all that would come back to you for approval, and, in, in the form of an adoption agreement, an amended adoption agreement for the pension plan.
When would that be?
Well, that would be when you say, yes, we support this, and we want to move forward with it, staff, do what you got to do to make this happen. That's when we would take the necessary steps to bring back what we needed from the union and what we needed from the, the FMPTF as far as an amended adoption agreement.
So one of the things, curiously, that's also been put out there is by agreeing to this, we can avoid having to face the union for negotiation.
That's not a guarantee, no. I mean, at, at any time.
But it seems to be insinuated that if we don't agree with this, then we're going to have to negotiate with the union, which could be something that is not to our benefit. So it's kind of like, kind of like a little bit of a threat, like, you know, if we don't get it-
I'm not saying it's a threat, I'm just saying it's a possibility.
Well, it's a possibility that if you don't give this, then you're going to have to deal with the unions. If you give it, there's a good chance you won't have to deal with the unions. That to me is, in the business world, that's what's called leverage.
I'm just giving you the facts.
All right, well, I can't speak for the council, but I can speak for myself. I am nowhere near prepared to make a vote on this, that's for sure. Any comments?
I, I would just chime in that, that I agree, and I'm a little late to the whole game, but I have been feverishly doing my homework and talking with other people and trying to get whatever level of understanding that I can. When Mr. Eastman gave his presentation, he made the comment that, that we would be receiving a lot more information. He said, I've submitted lots of information on it. And so I was kind of staying tuned for if there was any additional information. I haven't yet reviewed the letter by Mr. Lynn, simply because I haven't had it 24 hours yet. But I'm just wondering if there's any additional information that was submitted to the city?
No.
No?
I'm not sure what he could have been referring to. I know he said that we had gathered some information from Bellevue on their plan to come, to see how our plan compared to Bellevue. But I have not been given any additional information.
Okay.
The only other thing that I did, and I may have spoken to this previously when, when this was brought up, is I got a list from the pension administrator that had all the multipliers throughout the state, and I sorted that list. And I would tell you, the vast majority of them are right at anywhere from like 2.75 to 3.25. So the, the 3% is right there. When you look at the, it's the highest majority. That range is the highest majority of cities and counties in the state, where much fewer are over that, very few really. And then you have, you know, some that are still in the 2% range.
Well, I saw your chart, and it seems like 30 to 40% of the cities on that chart were at 2.5 or less. Certainly 30% were there.
Well, I, I didn't calculate percentages. I'm just saying, if you're taking a number, say 250, or may have been at 3%, where you have maybe 170 at below 3%.
Right. So I'm just trying to, when we make statements, just to clarify that somewhere between 30 to 40% of the cities that was put in the survey that was presented to council are at 2.5 or less.
I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. I don't recall right off the top of my head the percentages. I just, I just had numbers, just to count.
Any other comments?
Did, did we need any, did you want to add any information?
I could, I could just give a little feedback on that. As, as to waiting on the, waiting on the figures, I believe we've actually done, I think, Mandy, you would know, you've been there, or Michelle, I think we've done, what, three different cost studies at this point? I think the, I think the first one that we did, we've been working on this for almost a year, that we've been discussing this. We brought it up almost a year ago in our meetings, and when we saw that we had the surplus, we said, hey, we are scheduled for our yearly actuarial evaluation. Can we piggyback this cost study on here to see if it's feasible to increase the, the benefit? Because we have all these excess funds that are for that purpose. And as you said, surplus, they're surplus. There's, there's no reason for them to be in surplus, they should be used for the benefits. To the point of the, of getting those figures, this is done every single year with the pension. Every year, there's an actuarial evaluation. And while, yes, you could say, I would like to wait until the next actuarial evaluation to see what the numbers are, I think the thing to take into consideration here is, these actuaries, and I didn't even know what an actuary is, maybe some of you still don't, but they're just numbers people, and they look at these plans, and they figure out all the numbers, and they factor in on how many people are in the plan, how many, and they factor in on every one of those people retiring. So they're factoring in every police officer that we have right now, vesting, working to retirement age, and collecting for the average number of years that officers usually do before they die, which honestly is usually not very many, unfortunately. It's very uncommon for officers that work for the Dunellen Police Department to actually vest, retire, and collect. We only have, I think, what, four people? In all the years of our agency at police department, we only have four collecting right now for retirement, so.
We have three.
Three, so we only have three. And, and that kind of speaks to the issue that I was talking about earlier, about how we have these substandard pay, substandard pension plans, it's so hard to keep and retain people. People come here and they get a couple of years on the job, and then they go on to a bigger agency. They don't invest. And so the point that I make with that is while he says there's an $800,000 surplus now, that's factoring on every one of these people retiring, and they're not going to. And also, when they do that, valuation, as I said in my statement earlier, they're factoring in all these ups and downs. So yes, it's going, it may be lower now because we've kind of had a bad year, but then it's going to go back up the following year. So this is going to change every year. Every year, we can say, let's wait until next year's valuation, let's wait until next year's. It's going to fluctuate, but they've already factored that in for the long term. They're looking at 20, 25 years, and their opinion factors in everything that these numbers on the next evaluation are, are going to take into consideration, if that brings any clarity to that. So we, to the, the point that I was making, we're waiting on the figures. No, we're not waiting on the figures, we've had three cost studies already, we've, we've beat these figures to death.
Well, I think my point is, you may have spent a year on the figures, but council does not.
Sure, yeah, and I, and I do make sure-
This is a brand-new subject that has just been put on us with a, this is one of those big-ticket decisions that council will have to explain.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so we can appreciate you put a year, two years, three years in it, but we have not.
Sure. And I think Mandy has, if she hasn't already, I'm sure she can provide you with the different cost studies. They're, they're very simple, short actuary, basically just sums it up and says, here's the impact of this. So they're pretty easy to, to digest, and whether it's that most recent one or the couple that they have, and whatever other information, we can make sure that you guys have.
Just one, one correction. The item I was using for surplus was overfunded, not, I wasn't using surplus. I was saying, because the pension fund is overfunded, there's money to be considered for allocation. So if it had been underfunded, the city would be paying the expense.
And that was something else that I wanted to point to, too. So as, as she said, and if, if I understand this right, and again, this is, this is a layperson who's been studying this for the last year, starting to understand this, but these chapter monies are put into this account, and they're used for the city contribution. So in any case where there becomes a necessity for a city contribution, there, there are surplus funds sitting there. So if, let's say we did this, and then, which is not likely, they've already studied this, they're saying you're not going to have any contribution required from the city. But if there were, there's a big pot of money that you're able to draw from and start using that before it would ever even become a budget item. And that's not expected to even touch that pot, let alone drain that pot and then come to the budget. So it's a whole lot of information, and I understand you got to take some time to digest it, but to sum it up, this is, this proposal is, is only going to benefit, the, the officers that we have is going to benefit retaining and attracting folks, and it is little to nearly nonexistent risk to the city to cost any money whatsoever, ever.
Where I'm at isn't so much my resistance to the concept, because maybe it is something that needs to be done.
Yeah, you're, you're-
My resistance is any suggestion that council needs to make a quick decision in the next five days, whether we're going to do this or not. That's just simply not the way we should do business.
Absolutely. And we took our time to do it as well, so we, all we ask is that you make sure, we just want to make sure that you have all the information, and let us know if we can provide any of that to you, and that it can be on a consideration to hopefully move forward soon. Nobody's pressing to make a vote on this Monday, but we'd like to see it not dragged out for another year.
Chief, can you come up and me ask you just one question? Won't even be up there 30 seconds. Chief, I understand you have been the chief nearly seven years for Dunellen, correct?
I have.
And one statement that was made and continues to be made, that we have lost and will lose officers if we don't do these sort of things. So other than your one officer that left the force because of maternity, how many officers in seven years have left your department?
Zero.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out there. That's my question.
Becky?
Huh?
Is I fired or something?
You had one resign.
Two.
You had one resign, correct? Becky?
Becky resigned.
Yeah.
Well, that was-
But I fired two.
Yeah.
But I fired two as chief.
No, that doesn't count. I think the consensus is, is we will continue to discuss this when the information comes that we need.
So I'll make a note to let you know when we can expect the valuation as of October 2022, and we can put this back on for discussion.
Right.
Mandy, are you going to send the reports, the, the last two studies that were done? Is that something that we can review?
Yes, I was just looking for that. The most recent one was just really an email from the actuary that said, this, increasing it from this to this is going to increase your liability and reduce the surplus by X amount of dollars. That's just an email, it wasn't like a full-blown, you know, like actuarial say. He does that on his end, but he does actually give us that whole breakdown of his analysis. But yeah, I, I have the most recent one, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back, because I think we did, I don't recall, EJ, an actual study that was done before that, that was, that addressed the multiplier, but I'll look, but I'll provide you-
Just if it's available and not too complicated.
Yeah, and, and you guys are also welcome to, if you want to take a look at the last valuation that was done, don't come and ask me to explain it to you, I could tell you. That one is a very complicated one. That one, you probably have to get on the phone with the actuary and have them explain it. But, but those, I mean, we have all those records. You're welcome, if anybody wants some, I'd be happy to share them with you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move to agenda item number 11, the website, hosting and agenda meeting management, handing this to Sheriff.
Okay.
And Chief, if I could just ask you one thing, you can answer from here. You did have an officer that did leave your force to join the Florida Highway Patrol.
She came back.
And the officer came back home, correct?
And then she had a baby and left again.
So the officer that thought that there was greener pasture somewhere else decided to come back to Dunellen.
Can I answer that?
That's at least what I've, I've, I've heard.
It says because of the leadership that they stayed there, not for the benefits. That's what the officers tell me. And I'm very fortunate, and very kind. I'm the only chief where people have not left. But the United Cities have people that have been.
Okay. The reason I'm making a point is just to make sure the argument doesn't include that we currently have officers that are leaving, searching for better jobs with higher pay and better benefits other place. Okay. Mandy?
Okay, so I presented to you guys just a little while back, some solutions that we were looking for to better manage our agendas and our meetings, and try and get away from all these parts and pieces that are, you know, moving, and you got Zoom, and you got YouTube, and then you've got, our, our agenda management system is nonexistent. So I'll just put it to you that way. We don't pay for anything right now, we don't, I mean, it's a very basic program that doesn't have any sort of workflow process or automation, and it's very cumbersome to use. So we started looking into that first, and so we were approached by a company called Granicus about their solution, and so we have spent a lot of time, me, Michelle, and Andy have spent a lot of time researching this, going back and forth between the two companies, making sure that we're comparing apples to apples and what we're getting, so that we can come up with a, you know, a, a plan, a proposal that would best suit the city's needs, and, but still try to make sure that we weren't, you know, being charged an arm and a leg for something new. So I won't get into that detail yet, let me just, let me just give you the numbers first. Okay, so current services right now with Civic Plus, our annual web hosting fee is $6,080. We pay $3,500 per year for Audio Live, our ADA compliance certificate. And we do not have a current agenda meeting management solution. This is why we're, we're doing agenda in one part and then we're doing Zoom in another piece and we're doing YouTube in another piece. And the, the expense of actually uploading the YouTube video with the captions after the fact, after the meetings is, is an additional expense that we have to pay IT to do. So right now, we don't have anything in this call, in this row here. So current expense for that is $95.80 per year. Then right now, we have the expense of Zoom, the live stream captioning and the onsite and remote IT provider, uh, services that they provide here at the council meetings and the work that has to be done afterward manually uploading the YouTube video and that. So Civic Plus has given us a proposal of annual web hosting for $57.90, including the ADA compliance with that. Their agenda and meeting management solution would cost at least $7,180 a year. And I say at least because they have a base price and theirs is different. It's à la carte. So you get this base, but this base doesn't include this and it may not include that and it may not include email notifications. It may not include a customizable template or it may be limited to five boards. And if you have more than five boards, then you have to pay extra per year. You only get so many workflows in that program. And if you need customized workflows, then you pay additional for that every year. So this, their, their solution is very, very piecemeal and not, to be quite honest, very user friendly in my opinion. So that would come out, if we went with them, it would increase our cost to $12,970 per year. In addition to that, the way they are set up is they don't have the live stream solution that Granicus has that allows us to video stream directly to the website, date stamp during the meetings, you know, this agenda item, that agenda item. And if you've ever gone out on Marion County's website and looked at one of their meetings, you can click on the agenda item and it takes you right to where that is in the video.
Yeah.
Right?
I see that.
We don't have that ability with Civic Plus, with their solution that we have, they've offered. So there's a lot of stuff involved in, in implementing that, even though there's not actually an implementation fee. We would have to purchase an encoder, which could be several thousand dollars, a piece of hardware that we would need in order, order to caption and live stream. We still have to have the captioner. We, we can't get away from that. And the other disadvantage to that is their streaming is only to a third party. It goes to YouTube or it goes to Vimeo or one of those. It, it's not the city's live stream. It's not our video. We don't own it. It just gets put out there. So I really don't like that. And it requires additional equipment that we would have to buy, that Andy would have to install and, and it would be a track, it would be an expense. It would be an additional IT expense, labor for all that work, any equipment and any hardware necessary to enable us to, to do that. Whereas with Civic, with Granicus, they provide us with the encoder. That's part of our upfront cost of implementation. And everything is just done. Everything is seamless and it just all works together. There's not piecemeal this and that. And, you know, their, their cost is a little bit more, maybe a little over a thousand dollars more a year, but very well worth it in my opinion. And, and Andy has sat with us and he's sat with us while we've been on Zoom meetings with these folks and taught the tech with them because that's way over my head. And he, he said beyond shadow of a doubt, he feels like that the Granicus solution would be the best.
What's your recommendation?
Well, I got to get you over this hump first. So if you pay attention to the bottom line, so right now, what we're looking at with current services, we're spending about $31,000 a year.
Now?
Right, right now. So if we were to go with Civic Plus, it looks like, because they have waived the ADA compliance fee, but we did have to plug in a number for a cost to us with the encoder and all the work that's going to go along with that, us having to do all that installation and training staff on how to use that, that, that looks like about $28,000. Now Granicus, the first year, even though we have the implementation cost, I don't know, this is, yeah, that's the, oh, hold on a second, hold on, I'm all confused now. No, that's just the current spend for the IT lives, IT Zoom and live streaming is the 31,000. So if we go to the Civic Plus solution, we get rid of the Zoom, but we're still going to need IT. So it's going to go to 28,000. And we're just talking about this row here. If we go to Gran, if we go to Granicus in year one, we can, we get rid of Zoom, we still have to have the captioning, but we're estimating approximately $8,000 savings in IT services that we won't have to be paying Andy and his team to do for us. But there's this implementation fee of $4,500.
And that's one time?
The $4,500 is one time. That would be a one-time cost. And then it would be 8268 per year with about a 5% annual increase. So from there, the agenda management solution with Granicus would, Granicus would be a new expense to the city of 8268, but we would no longer be using Zoom and we would be saving some money on IT services. So there's that piece. So wanted to, what, what, another thing we talked about is going over to them for website hosting. Their annual website hosting, they would waive in the first year. They would not charge us for the hosting for the first year. And their annual fee, starting in year two, would be $4,200. Right. So if you look at column C and column E, Civic Plus, you're looking at about, for these two services, for web hosting and for meeting and agenda management, $12,970. In year two, with Granicus, you're looking at $12,468. So even though your upfront cost to move over to Granicus completely for agenda and meeting management and for your website hosting, you've got an additional $12,000 if we want to implement this, a one-time upfront cost this year, which we would probably need to do a budget amendment for because it's not budgeted. The, the $9,000 for the agenda meeting software is budgeted. We would have to look at where we could pull those monies from. But going forward, what we would experience in cost is less than what we're currently, what, what the current Civic Plus proposal has come out to be. So my recommendation would be to go with Granicus for both services because they sort of, although it's not necessary, you don't have to go with them for website hosting to be able to do the agenda and meeting management, but they do talk to each other. So if, if the, if we're doing, if we're creating an agenda in the meeting solution, it's automatically going to be on the website. We don't have to go out and update the calendar and so, you know, anytime, anything is done, it's automatically published over on the website side. And it just makes things more streamlined for not only staff, but for the public to be able to go to one place and, and have everything at their fingertips and be able to easily search agendas and minutes and videos. The Civic Plus solution, you don't have the ability to timestamp during the meeting, which another added benefit to that is when you're timestamping and taking notes during the meeting, by the end of the meeting, you have a, you basically have a set of minutes done. You just got to go in and clean them up. So it's going to save staff a lot of time in minutes preparation. And with Civic Plus, their, their live stream, because it's going to YouTube, you can't timestamp until after the meeting and then you have to go back and basically timestamp the video. And if we don't want to do that, they will do it, but they'll do it for another $2,500 a year for up to 36 meetings. So I would like to get approval to start working with them toward moving to Granicus for both of these solutions. And if we, if we need a budget amendment to cover the, the one-time setup fees, then we could let you know where we could find the money and how, and whether or not we would require a budget, a budget amendment. I don't know, Jen might not say we need one until, see how we look at the end of the year.
Yeah, I kind of want to start doing those more on a regular basis so we're not caught at year end.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out if we're going to be compliant with statute. If we don't use it, it stays in the bank. It's just getting it formally approved, just that. So you may see more budget amendments more often because at year end, it, statute requires a budget amendment be done there later than November 30. We're still deep in year end processing, even paying year end bills. So this way, at least if we do it more often for larger transactions, we're covered and, and our chances of violating statute, very minimal at that point. Because typically we don't go over budget. We manage, you know, we don't spend all our money usually during the year. You know, projects take a while. So we've been fortunate, but I just, we're getting closer to doing more and, and faster.
Let me, let me ask, Councilwoman Mandelka, you're pretty much known to be a computer whiz, spend a lot of time on you and Daniel. Are you familiar with Granicus?
A little bit, yeah. I've done my reading and I'm really happy about all the work that Mandy did and I think it could really potentially move the city forward and bring things together. It's really disjointed right now and difficult to manage and I really, and, and with the added benefits of how this could free staff up for other things, I think it would really just move the city forward in the absolute right direction.
I'm not familiar with Granicus. Is that how you pronounce it? But I have experienced programs that seem to be Granic. And it's the difference of night and day compared to what we have, where you can negotiate and find out where you want to go and look things up that, you know, okay, it's a four-hour meeting, where was that? You know, and you're just fast forwarding back and forth trying to find it. You can, you know, find it right away.
I think the list of cities that are already using Granicus, like Gainesville, Crystal River, Orlando, Williston.
Marion County.
Marion County. I think they did their homework.
But I would like to also, if I may, invite Michelle to make some comments because she is much more of a hands-on with the website and the agenda publication here in the last year and a half. So I would like for her to be able to provide some comments too because she has some really good points to make as a user of the system.
All I would like to really say to you all is that in working with a website and more importantly, really with the Agenda Center, it's very cumbersome when you're working with Civic Plus right now. When you, anytime you're trying to work with documents, when you're uploading an agenda or you're working with the backup and such, you have to pull it off of the agenda. Then you have to save it. You have to go into your items tab. You have to alter the item, reload the backup. Then you have to go back into your agenda and then you have to take the item, you have to load it back up, then you have to save it again. I mean, it's very time consuming, extremely cumbersome. It, it, it's terrible. When it, and same thing when you're working in the website. It's not very easy to go into the website and work with the pages. Sometimes it's extremely difficult for us when we're going in and we just want to tweak something very simple on a page. Sometimes you have to go deep into the backend of the website and you have to, you know, go into a separate section of the page or you have to go through a different module just to get to that part of the page. And it's 30 steps just to do one simple little change or something like that. When we looked at the demos for Granicus, you're literally doing it right on the page. You, you don't have to go anywhere else. You don't have to open another tab. You don't have to go to the document center. The document center is right there. You open it right up, you pull it right in. It, it just was very quick and very seamless. They have workflows that are set up that, you know, you, you can get something and you can work right with it. People can be working with the agenda on the agenda at the same time. You know, you don't have to wait for.
She's not excited about it.
Show your three minutes.
It just, to me, it just, it's going to be so much better for staff to really just have something so streamlined. And then the best part, truly, the, the interaction with the citizens, with our neighbors, is what we like to call them in our training, because you literally can watch the, you can watch the meeting happen, you can have the agenda right there. People can be sitting at home, on their couch, in their PJs. They can have the agenda right there, same screen, agenda is right there. They can have the video, just like she's showing you, the video's right there. They can be watching the meeting happen and they can be interacting with it as it's happening in real time. So when we see that people are not showing up at the meeting, we're going to make it so much easier for them to show up at the meeting.
Okay.
Just real quick, so let's say God forbid we have another pandemic. God forbid, God forbid. With this Granicis.
Granicus.
Yeah. Oh, would we be able to do like this, like if we all had to stay at home, could we all, the council members somehow click in like we did that, remember how we did with the Zoom?
Yeah, and I'm sure that if we had to go back to a Zoom type of product to be able to meet virtually, this doesn't allow you to all meet.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
No.
Okay, that's cool.
All right, I want to put this on the, put this on the agenda.
It does allow for something called e-comment. So you as council members, while you're sitting up there during a meeting, you can actually log in to this software and if somebody is commenting, they, I mean, they can make comments to you in real time, you know, while you're sitting up there, if you're discussing an agenda item that may be, hey, I like this idea, don't vote for it, or hey, I love this idea, please sit for it.
But do we have to, well, that would be some way, but I would assume you'd have to read it out loud or?
No, no, they can just comment. They can just, I mean, it's public record. We do have to maintain it. And, you know, if it got to be out of control, I mean, if you got somebody on there just cussing you out.
Yeah.
And you say, you know what, we don't want to do this anymore. We have the ability to stop and start.
Okay. I'm ready to sign.
I just wanted to show you real quick, this is Marion County.
What do you want to put this on the agenda?
This could be, this, I'm sorry, this was a very short meeting, but if this were a three-hour meeting and this item was, you know, an hour and a half into the meeting, all you have to do is find this, click on it and it's going to take you right to that section of the meeting, no more trying to find it in Zoom or in YouTube. So.
That's wonderful. I like that.
Council, you want to put this on the agenda for approval?
Just consent?
Okay, very good.
Do we do consent or do you want it on the agenda?
Who?
Consent, as I could by stopping the company.
Would be consent agenda or regular agenda?
I'm good with consent.
Consent? You can always pull it off consent if there's something comes up that you want to read as stuff. Okay, put on consent agenda. Very good.
Okay. Thank you so much.
We're going to make questions. Early Christmas. Early Christmas girls.
It's kind of like, in a sense, if you were a salesman, I'd say, I want two. Definitely.
Do CS.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job, ladies. Now we're at number 12, council comments.
Oh, we got another update.
Before you get to there, let me give you one more update on the storm. I've just got it because it did change things a little.
You just had an officer resign.
It's not coming, right?
Yeah, the storm's coming.
It's coming.
It's now been upgraded to a category one low. The difference in wind speed right now from what it was to be upgraded is five miles, five miles an hour. But however, Marion County has been downgraded in their wind gusts by 10 to 15 miles an hour, which is good news for us. And I told you earlier that there's no government buildings open tomorrow, closed tomorrow. But now the clerk of the court is closed. That's the only one in Marion County. The city of Ocala, they're going to close their business offices and recreational parks, which is pretty normal that you do. And the state attorney's office is going to close. So, but just give you an update. I'd like for us to remain where we at tomorrow via workday for the city of Denell.
And Chief, I would think everyone would be understanding that if the weather would start turning for the worse, that staff and you would have the wherewithal to say, it's time to get out of here, you know?
Absolutely. Absolutely, we would do that.
Have a special council meeting to do that. No, all right, Chief.
Yeah, I'd call for a special council meeting, bring you all back.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, good. All right, we'll go down the line. Ms. Covice, you have any council comments?
Yes, because Georgina wasn't here, I knew for certain she was going to bring up information for council concerning the dock and ADM assessable kayak launch system. There were three companies that were inquired as to, because on, they said they provided ADA dock and launch systems. They're all, okay, if bird poo, raccoon poo gets on it, Troy hooks up a hose and washes it off, okay, and it's not a rust. Long-term situation as far as how long they will last as a usable system. Three companies, the one that came in low, low ball was AcuDoc, if you'd all like to research that. It's A-C-C-U capital D-O-C-K dot com. And they have a very good site. Depending on the size of your dock, that would dictate the price. And again, Georgina will give you the details on that. The other thing is, we got into this because of council consensus about what should the city pursue in the way of applying for the Mobile T Hometown Grant. And for a memory refresher, the grant is open to all cities, municipalities, up to a population of 50,000. And they're regarded as a highly competitive grant. And it's not just for Florida, it's the whole nation. So I went and checked out FWC grants and there is opening. Now this is the one we will get, but this is good news. I'm the purveyor. We will get an FWC grant for this ADA compliant dock and kayak system because this grant that opens in February 2023, it has been legislated that FWC provide grants to communities in the sum of $1.25 million. They have to give it away. And the title of the grant is Florida Access, I'm sorry, Florida Waters Access Grants. And particularly, they are very interested in giving this grant money to communities who are going to supply ADA compliant dock and kayak launching systems because the kayak business paddlers on paddle boards is a booming, booming business in Florida at this time. Last year, it is reported through the Florida website, DEO, I believe it was, that over $4 billion in paddle boards and all kinds of kayaks fishing and otherwise were sold here in Florida alone. So FWC is promoting these kayak launches that are ADA compliant. So we will get our kayak launch. Again, that FWC grant opens February 1st, 2023.
Who would apply for it?
And we will be on it.
Georgina is aware, she would apply.
Yes, yep. So the work that's being done for the Hometown T Grant, directly apply. We can use all that information that Troy is gathering and just send it on to the FWC grant application.
Can you ask a quick question to Jan?
Sure.
So if each, so the T-Mobile grant and the other grant provide the same thing, ADA assessable kayak launch, is there any reason why we would apply for the same thing for both grants, especially if you're saying that one is very likely? Would it then be advisable to do something different?
Well, there's, one, there's no charge for applying to grants and the Hometown T-Mobile Grant is really a very simple grant, online application. Fill in the blanks, two paragraphs summary, send it on.
Let me just repeat, so if you feel the chances are very high for the grant, for the second grant that you talked about, and that's, you say, we will get our, you say, we will get our kayak launch.
Yeah.
So if that grant looks like it can seal the deal, would it be advisable to do something else with the other grant?
It wouldn't hurt anything.
Because otherwise, we're now using up one of our T-Mobile entries on something that you're saying we probably already have.
No, that is an excellent point. That's an ex, thank you. Okay, so maybe we could backtrack and use the application for the T-Mobile grant for some other project.
Yeah, maybe even a project that relates, that relates to that.
Maybe our second choice, we go back and look what our number two choice was. Jan's going no, so let's say yes.
Troy has the mic right there.
Troy has the.
If we apply for both grants and stay very positive, we get both grants. The T-Mobile grant is a lot more open-ended that we could ask permission to redirect the funds to an addition to the project or an alternative project. But the.
FWC grant.
FWC grant would be more specific.
Definitely.
That it would have to be used there, okay? But I'm pretty confident that we're going to get one or the other. And I would encourage us to apply for both simultaneously, but maybe in the wording of the T-Mobile grant that it would be used for this project or in conjunction with this type of project.
Parks and Recreation, another Parks and Recreation.
Okay, because there's no, and I don't know if the FWC grant requires matching funds. The T-Mobile grant could be the matching fund for that project.
He's going to mic over it for James. All right, I'm going to be the negative Nelly in the room. I just have a question. How do you know we're guaranteed to get the FWC grant? We, city of Denell?
I think, well, I went online and there's literally lots and lots of information given out, okay? And the priority would be, I think, because of a lesser amount we are asking for, we're not looking for a full boat launch like we already have. I think when they look at the amount of dollars requested for it, I think it's a shoe-in. And again, it's because about the use of kayaks is recreational.
I can see where you're coming from.
Right.
Grants are not guaranteed.
Okay.
So that's the negative Nelly side of me. You know, I'm not saying we don't stand a great chance. Fingers crossed, toes crossed, we do get it. But if you have an opportunity to apply for multiple grants for the same thing.
Absolutely.
And ask for redirecting the funds, which a lot of times you can, you want to apply for anything you can.
Absolutely.
And if one of the city's council's major priority is a kayak launch, that's what you want to focus on. So my opinion, you apply for both for the same project. And as Troy said, FWC grants typically do require a match. So if we get another grant, that's the match.
Yeah.
It's not that we have to put anything out of our pocket, which most grants aren't 100%. You know, 25% is typically a minimum. Now, from what I've been told, the gold standard is a 50% match for grants. So as these become more competitive, we can do grant for grant and not have anything out of pocket. Or maybe it allows us to.
Enhance it.
I was trying to think of the word. Enhance the project from just maybe a minimum. So I agree, let's, I mean, I think we need to do both, but again, that's.
Well, I think what we have here is a wonderful suggestion by Councilwoman Covice. A strategy by Councilwoman Mendos, and then Troy kind of cutting in the middle and say, okay, we can take care of both, where we word one of the grants in a way that gives it a little wiggle room. So I'm good with that.
I just like the, by Monday, I'll check on it, but I don't believe the FWC grant is a dollar match grant. I'll go back and read everything, but I don't remember reading anything about this particular FWC grant being a dollar match grant, but I'll check on it. I'll do my homework.
Okay, we have to move on, okay? Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Mendos, you have any comments?
Oh, yeah, I'll go next. I just wanted to say that I have, well, long before I got here, I thought about what I could do to contribute if indeed I got a seat on the council. So I just wanted to advise of my plan to begin looking at the city's comprehensive plan. Well, I've looked at it a little bit, but now I'm kind of making some calls. I'm working with some local people, outreach to the DEO in Tallahassee and other statewide organizations, try to come up with some meetings and figure out some first steps on how to take a look at this comprehensive plan that I think we all know is old and dusty and needs updating and just sort of try to understand what are the next steps in doing that and how can we all work together. So I'm hoping to have a presentation in a workshop soon that just sort of brings us up to speed with what is the comprehensive plan? Maybe you all know, but we'll do it for my benefit. What is it? How do we need to be using it as decision-makers in the city? And what do we need to do to really bring it up to, bring it up to speed?
So who are you looking forward to giving a presentation to somewhere?
Oh, yeah.
Right here, by who? By who?
Well, I'll just put together a presentation.
You?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
About a sort of, you know, Florida state statute in conjunction with a comprehensive plan, where we're at with our current comprehensive plan and what are some ways that we might work together to bring it up to speed and better be able to utilize it with decision-making? Because I think a lot of the decisions the council makes really needs to be tied to that comprehensive plan. I'm not sure that, I don't feel that we always do that, so I would like to, you know, try to bring that to light.
Well, I am very glad that you're willing to put the time into that because based on everything I've been told, that is one of the biggest needs of the city right now, that that particular area of the city really needs some attention. So if you're willing to dig in, I'm sure no one's going to tell you to stop.
I am. I'm going to go to Tallahassee, meet with some people, get some ideas. If the staff or the council has ideas or knows things about it, please feel free. I'm also looking forward to tackling the CRA and bringing you guys some information on history of CRA, how we got to where we are. And again, what we need to do to bring that up to date so we can make our CRA plan fit together with our comprehensive plan and make our decisions for the city based on that. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Ms. Williams?
No comments.
Thank you.
No comments by Smear?
No.
No comments.
Ready to go home?
I just have a couple informational things, more than comments. The FDOT has pretty much finalized its plans for the crosswalk from the parking lot over to Blue Gator. It's going to be diagonal. It's going to have a, from what I understand, a basic stop, red, yellow, green. If you want to look at the plan that FDOT is planning to go with, and they have pretty much said, discussion's over what, this is what we're going to do. Troy has copies of it, correct, Troy?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Mandy. So if anyone wants to see what the final plan is, it's there. We did have a meeting within the last week or 10 days with the county, Troy, myself, and Mandy, you were there too?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
You've heard performance of that.
And it looks like it's finally going to happen. We had representatives from FGWA and US Water at the Blue Moon Park and they're talking about starting to put the infrastructure in for the restroom. So that is, US Water said that they were hoping to start sometime with it before the first of the year. Just want to be clear, we are going to approve, Mandy, Monday, the purchase requirements for the city beach equipment, the material.
Yes.
That's going to be on the agenda. Just want to make sure we don't forget that. And then I just want to make a comment that again, last Thursday, portions of our ability to communicate from City Hall were again compromised. This is an ongoing problem where our computer or various aspects of our telecommunications are just shut down, it's happened. Tim has told me he's on the same program and you said.
14 times.
14 times in the last year.
In June, it was two.
And that's.
Do you have Comcast?
No.
We've moved to Comcast.
But it's still, it was just a, so.
There's regional outage.
Yeah. Well, whatever it is, we just have to.
It's a less looked company.
I hope it's corrected. It's just simply unacceptable if it would continue. City cannot, it was really a tough situation when these things happen on a Thursday, which is our last day to communicate before we go into a three-day weekend. We were basically compromised the entire day that we come back on until that evening. I had a lot of things I needed to do, questions to ask, and it just went on hold till the weekend's over and then when everybody comes back, everybody's real busy because it's a Monday. So a lot of times I can't get my answers answered until Monday afternoon. So these sort of things are, it just can't continue on this way. So we have the crosswalk, the bathroom, purchase of the material and the comment on communication. That's what I have to say.
You so?
Anybody else? Okay. No city attorney comments? Yes.
I just wanted to point out something. I got an email from Wally about an article that was posted on the Riverland News announcing the candidates and it, and I have emailed Sean to let him know that it's not correct. He says in the article that the new council members, with the exception of Councilwoman Mendelka, that they would be sworn in on November 14th, and that is not true. So if you see that in the newspaper this week, the correct date is December 12th when Tim and Wally are sworn in. So it will be, it will not be correct if it's in this, this week's edition of the paper is November 14th.
Okay.
But I've let them both know.
Good catch. No comment from the attorneys? They give you anything in writing or anything you want to read?
I don't, I have Andrew on Zoom.
Hi, I just wanted to wish everybody the best with the storm and I look forward to seeing you all.
and I look forward to seeing you all.
Be safe.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, before everybody starts packing up, we still have one more agenda item, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment? Close out the meeting. Okay, that's unusual. One once, twice. All in favor to adjourn?
Just have a couple.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.